To order 602. Because this is a special meeting, we don't actually have any minutes or policy listed here. Any reason to prioritize the flow of the meeting?
No.
Okay. So that brings us to our public comment, our recognition of visitors. I see a few people virtually and we have someone here. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Are you just here to listen or did you have something for public comments?
I was going to public comment, yes.
Okay, so Paul will be with you in just a sec.
So you did consider at the SU meeting whether or not you want a public comment before or after conversations about budget?
Yeah.
Thought before you make any decision?
Right.
So just think through which you would like to do.
Yeah, actually, why don't we do that? Were you planning to stay through the duration of the meeting, through the entire meeting?
For at least an hour and a half of it, yeah.
Okay, so. So why don't we?
Chair said he is not speaking tonight.
He's not speaking tonight and any of the other folks? There are a few names that look like they, sorry, I forgot my glasses. There are a few folks who look like maybe they're not, they're joining to.
Um, they're not there.
Okay. And she, does she want to do public comment or wait until after the budget discussion? Because I think that's probably why, I'm guessing that most of the comments are related to budget tonight, so it might be more fruitful if people hear the budget discussion first. Does that work for Ally?
Whichever works for you.
Okay, so yeah, let's do our discussion in our slideshow and then we'll make sure before the board makes any motions on the budget to circle back for public comments. So that brings us to Morgan and Lynn.
So we're going to bring you back to where you were at your last meeting. We're going to do a review. We do have some different people that are on, so we're going to do a high-level review. We won't do everything that we did at the last meeting, but we'll be. From your budget vote, you had 548 no's and 499 yeses. So your margin was 49 voters across your four towns.
This is the voting history. So 2020 at the bottom of this screen is the first vote that we had as a unified system. And we've just put that up there so you can see what the voting margins were and the first five budgets were all passed. This is the first one to be voted down.
This gives you a sense of how many voters came and expressed their opinions about the budget in each of the communities. And as a result of the defeated budget vote, we sent out a community survey to try to get a scent, sorry, of what people's thoughts were about the budget. So there were, the questions were really about if you voted against the budget, what factor led to your decision? What questions you have about the school district budget? What questions do you have about Vermont's education funding system? What thoughts concerns question you want to share with the board administration? There are also a couple of other questions that had to do with how people would like to interact with information around the next budget. So we'll be using that internally as we plan our communication plan. So I'm going to give this survey, so there are some additional responses since we themed this, so there are some additional responses. So we'll be using the additional responses to, I'm just going to give it to board members for now because we didn't redact anything and there are some specific things named in there. If you want to take it, Mary, tell me how long you want to take to just peek through this and then we can have a conversation. Tony, can you send it to Kat? I think is she the only board member on the line right now?
She's trying to, she may be getting her.
Okay.
Say, you know, maybe look, just under 10 minutes or so, eight to 10 minutes to read through it.
So before you dig in, one thing that we're going to do, the next thing on our task list is not that we have more information, because information is still coming rolling in from the survey, they're all still alive, is we're trying to pull this apart to create an FAQ, because there are definitely themes that we see in this that we know we can turn into an FAQ and there are definitely some things that I think we could help to clear up. There are some misconceptions that are really out there. So we'll be working to produce something out of this to be helpful in terms of our communication.
How's everyone doing with the paper, Lynn and Morgan, to proceed?
So just a couple of things as you know others who are wanting to add and things that you put in there. I think it's clear that there are a lot of misconceptions about the Vermont education funding system and the elements that our spending impacts in the formula versus how property, previous property value actually impacts the formula. So I think that we definitely have work we could do there communicating better about the funding formula. I will say one of the suggestions from someone was, could you just make a Vermont Ed funding system for dummies, like visual? And I don't know how to do that because it is so complicated. I feel like the way Morgan breaks it down is in, it's the simplest form I've ever seen, the way that he breaks it down. So without missing like how all of the things are connected and all of the elements, I don't know how to break that down further, we won't stop trying, but certainly that. And then I think we need to do a better job of being able to communicate what the functions are of our central office, because I think there are deep misunderstandings and misconceptions about what we're doing, because that's the work we're doing in the SU and what we're doing here that we're legally obligated to be holding as a supervisory union or as a district. Times are definitely different than they, than they work historically in terms of the functions in statute that we have to hold at the supervisory union. And to just even with Act 173, the shifts that we're expected to hold at the supervisory union. That's one of our tasks is figuring out, we don't know if it'll be during this time or beyond this time, that we keep working to try to help people to understand that. And one of the pieces that we got from having the conversation at the SU board level was an attempt to help identify where we are in terms of comparisons to other supervisory unions, either nearby or in our, in our general region. So Morgan's working on some comps there that the SU board will be able to take a look at hopefully in April.
I think, I'll just add that I think that people, we feel like we're so, you know, small towns, small community in Vermont. We're the 13th largest system in the state out of around a little over 50. And so, and yet, and this kind of misunderstanding of what gets held at the central office and administrative level, because we are obligated, statutorily obligated, to meet all so many complexities of what it takes to run an educational system, both from a state statute and federal law. And that takes, that takes people and relative to most or to many, even in Franklin County, but beyond central offices, ours is a pretty lean staff as far as numbers. So I heard a lot from people and I see it in the surveys, this idea that this, that the central office not just a lot, not misunderstanding around what gets held here, that then allows everyone in the buildings to do what they're doing with our students and our owners.
I think even to, that's Dan, right?
Yes.
Your point last time is that part of the budget that says central services, I think that your thinking was that that was like what was in this building. And there's a whole lot more that are, that is held in the central services line that is pushed out to the schools. And I think that, you know, it's, it's kind of a balance between what we're obligated to do through statute, the decisions we've made strategically. One, this board in particular, we had conversations many years ago about facilities and about, you know, we had a building that we had to go back in and do a very expensive project kind of over again, because some mistakes had been made when we were in a place where, you know, these administrators are taught how to lead schools. They are not taught how to take care of boilers and water systems and, you know, big things like that. And before we had a facilities director, that was on our plates. So we made the decision that's this board and then it actually shipped it up to the SU because of efficiency, we felt like the one person could do the whole SU. So now these people, these administrators do not have to worry about Vermont bid law or have to figure out what kind of boiler we should be replacing the existing one with and rely on people who actually have expertise not to do that. So some of those things are decisions we've made for efficiency sake and for us to be wise with how we're spending our money.
And ultimately, from the facilities perspective, I mean, Burn is amazing what he holds and does. And it is really forward-thinking in the sense that ultimately we will likely save money having someone in that position who is able to catch things and maintain the buildings and catch things, little problems before they become really big expensive problems and to help us kind of understand kind of how to phase things in over time in a kind of balanced fiscal way and prioritize. I mean, I think that that's, you know, the long-term, we want, these are aging facilities and we want to do our best to kind of keep them in as, you know, good shape as possible. And he's certainly helping with that.
I think food service is another example and what I, the last thing I'll say about both of those is both of those positions have brought in a tremendous amount of grant money as well to the district for us to be able to do projects that we would not have been able to afford without people that have the dedicated time to go search those out, write them and then follow through for them as well.
I think what you said about communication being the biggest problem as far as that administrative piece, that people aren't aware of what Burn does, of what the bringing him in has done for us as a supervisory union. And I think that again is that letting, how we let the community know how important this is and that it is saving us money in the long run.
Yeah, we've been having internal conversations about, I think one of the things that we did during COVID was everybody around us was overwhelmed. Our teachers were overwhelmed, support staff was overwhelmed, our leaders were overwhelmed. We held things and only let it get through if it needed to. And I think that we have to, we have to be careful about not doing that too much now because I don't think we're very good at saying, here are the things that we're holding that are really heavy right now that we don't need to put on you because we see how much you're actually holding. So I think what we've talked about internally is how can we create something that more visibly represents the things that are held in each of the positions at central office? What we're legally required to do, what, what positions were added to try to be more efficient, what positions were added to try to take things off the principals' plates so the principals could really focus on instruction and learning? Because we want better student outcomes, we need principals in the classroom working with teachers and they can't do that if they're having to track down quotes on replacing boilers or completing pot lunch several grand apartments and things like that. You want to move on, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this chart represents per pupil spending across the state of Vermont for the school year that we're in right now. Down at the very bottom, there are two blue lines. The very bottom is your district, Northern Mountain Valley. The blue line right above that is Ennisburg-Richford. The red lines are our neighbors in Franklin County. The first black line is the Franklin County average and the second black line is the statewide average. So you can see this, if you think about all these lines as a separate school district, you have a school at the very, very bottom is likely a non-operating district somewhere in the state, all the way up to the highest spending at the top. And you can see that NMV and ER are in the 12th and 16th low-spending positions for this school year. Morgan, you want to take this one or do you want me to do this one?
So this, this chart shows on the left side those bottom 20 districts out of 120-something across the state for FY '24. So it's just blowing up the bottom there. You can see Northern Mountain Valley and Ennisburg-Richford and where they are relative to the, to the floor. The right side of the chart, FY '25 and spending per pupil, the information's a little bit old, but after 10 meeting day, we took the warned budgets that we could get information on and then looked at the results of those votes. So on the right side, every line that's in green represents a community that passed its vote. Every line in red represents a community that had a failed vote and the two in black had not held a vote as of 10 meeting day. And so what we put this up there to show you is that even if our two budgets, EMV and NMV, passed, both towns would have lost a few places on the race to the bottom to that 122nd spot. There may be towns above us that have a failed vote and may be cutting pretty drastically to come down there. But I think when the Ennisburg-Richford board warned their budget on Monday, they dropped below where Northern Mountain Valley was and I suspect that after tonight you'll drop back below Ennisburg-Richford. So I think we just wanted to sort of set the stage in terms of where we are compared to the other districts in the state. Last point on that, and I'll probably get the names wrong, but starting from the bottom, Morgan, Stratton, Holland and Ira are all school districts that don't operate schools, so they tuition all their kids up. So there's no, there's no business of running a district going on there other than approving those bills. Mount Anthony, which is fourth from the bottom, is a very large high school-only district. And so we suspected they're down there because they have, they're one of the few districts in Vermont that has some ability to have efficiencies because of their size. Is there anything else you want to add on those?
I just will correct, I said 12th and 16th for this year. We're actually 12th and 18th for this year and then we dropped to ninth and 10th with the proposed budget that we just had.
So in this chart, the red line is showing what your current district-wide tax rate is, that are at $1.15. The blue line is showing what the projected tax rate has been for the same budget. So this was the budget you warned on January 3rd. If we start over at the left-hand side of the chart, you'll see when you approved the budget, we thought we were delivering about a penny decrease to the taxpayers. As we moved to the next blue dot about a week later, the legislature made some adjustments to their education fund projections. Tax rate was going to go up a little bit. Another week goes by and they make some adjustments again and it drops back down. And this, those first three dots, that's a trend that we normally see each year as the legislature moves through their session. You'll see the third week of January, there's a big spike where the projected rate would have gone up to $1.52. That was related to the original caps that were under Act 127 whereby districts that saw a decline, the share of their pupils were supposed to get a soft landing under Act 127. The way the law was written, there were a couple anomalies in there. The first thing is that the benefit of that soft landing was not given only to those districts, there were several others that found themselves with that soft landing. And the way that the soft landing was structured was that a district's tax rate couldn't increase more than 5%. And so several districts found out that if they were already going to be at that 5% cap, they could add whatever spending they wanted and their tax rate wouldn't go up. Because it's a statewide funding system and a statewide Ed pool, those expenses above that cap had to be picked up by somebody and we were among the somebody's that would have to pick that up. So the tax rate spiked up to projected $1.52. The legislature worked on H850, which is a bill that corrected that, kind of brought some normalcy back to the tax rate calculation so that there was a direct correlation between how much you spent and where your tax rate would be. And so you'll see once some, that bill made its way through the legislature, the tax rate dropped and stayed relatively steady through the first half of February. And so the important thing to remember on this is that this variation in that blue line was off of the same budget. We did not change anything in terms of our spending. Our equalized pupils didn't change. It was just based on the flux that was the education fund this year. And then the yellow line that follows opposite is the yield rate and that's. And then the yellow line that follows opposite is the yield rate and that's the number the legislature sets. That is the last piece of the formula for setting our tax rates. So as we head into this budget discussion, we talk about these numbers a lot in a normal year. If we look at the budget that you warned for Town Meeting Day, if you wanted to drop that rate by a cent and nothing else changed, you would need to cut about $200,000 out. That number goes up the farther you cut, but it stays pretty steady. We also predict that for every $89, the yield increases, your tax rate would go down by a cent. And again, the yield is that rate that is ultimately set by the legislature in May. House Ways and Means is scheduled to vote out a yield bill next week from what we're hearing. And the other rumor that we're hearing is that the yield rate is over $10,000. So a pretty significant increase from where we were a few weeks ago. And as we start going into modeling budgets and things that you might take out of your budget, we'll be using, now using that $10,000 yield figure. It seems to be the most legitimate.
Can you go back one slide?
Yeah.
So one thing I just want to say about the yield, the yellow represents what the yield did after you warned your budget. So, and then what that corresponding impact was in your tax rate. So as Morgan just said on that last slide, every time that yield goes up by $89, you're going to see about a penny decrease on your tax rate. He's going to go over that in the next slide. But I just wanted to say that I want you to remember that Town Meeting, 30 budgets across the state were voted down and there were around 20-ish budgets that they just naturally have a later voting date. They don't vote on Town Meeting regularly and there were some who chose to delay their budget as a result of H850. So the theory is if those budgets that were defeated continue to reduce spending, which we're having difficult conversations about reducing spending, we've already done it at the SU budget, we did it at the Ennisburg-Richford budget on Monday as well, and then we're going to make some cuts tonight. All of those will have a positively, a cumulative positive effect on the dollar yield. So when all that, those cuts are put together, we can anticipate that we're going to see the top, the tax rate and our communities go down further as a result of that reduced spending across the state. So I think our, we haven't had any first revotes yet. I think we're coming up within the next week or two. But we'll start to, as, it's just more, once they get more information, we'll see the movement on that yield. I just want to remind us that before we get into the, the cut discussions.
And it just speaks to the fact that we don't have, if we, we don't have to exact all of the reduction out of cuts because we have this, this system with the yield and this, so that we can potentially find that balance between what we cut from the budget and what is going to ultimately kind of be addressed at the state level that will help the situation for our tax rate.
Morgan, I'm going to ask you to talk about the floor again to Mary's point of the decisions that you're going to make tonight about how much you reduce, how much the SU budget is reducing you by, how much cuts in this budget are going to reduce you by, the impact of that, now we're now thinking $10,000 yield and further implications if the yield goes up anymore. And then I want you to talk to them about the floor.
Sure. So I think we may touch on it again later, but if we stay on this chart for now, you'll see that the, the blue, last blue dot on that line is at $1.10. In Vermont, your tax rate can't fall below a dollar. So if you cut your budget below a dollar and I run the spreadsheet and I say, well, your tax rate really should be 95 cents, the state is still going to be assessing you and your tax rate is a dollar. So there is no, no value to the district to go below that point. Where we are now was at $1.10 with a yield that was below $10,000. So the yield's gone up a few hundred. That's pushed you down further. We'll talk about some of the cuts at the SU level later on, which has pushed you down further. And so there's no warning bells yet, but we need you to be aware of the floor because if the legislature does make a big move on the yield, either based on these other districts approving budgets with markedly reduced spending or possibly districts going out for a second vote and having to cut more and go out for a third vote, each of those events is going to push the yield up and push your tax rate down. And so there's a risk if you leave tonight or whenever you are warning a budget, if you're too close to a dollar, you could get a budget approved and then when the yield is set in probably late May, you may find yourself in this, in this place where you're contributing money to the rest of the state, which is clearly not the intent of Act 127. On this chart, you'll see for each town what the impact would be of a one cent cut to the budget. And so if we start up in the upper left with Bakersfield, you'll see across the top, that first row, we modeled for property values that are on the grant list, listed at $100,000, $200,000, $300,000. The second line is the CLA for Bakersfield and I think we've covered this a lot in the meetings, but the CLA is the way that the state makes sure that each town is paying based on the fair market value of their properties rather than the grant list of their properties because grant lists are updated infrequently and on different schedules for different towns. So in this case, Bakersfield has the lowest CLA in our district. And so what that means is that if there's a property listed for $100,000 on their grant list, the state thinks its fair market value is really $135,000. And Berkshire, which also has a CLA below 100, but not as far, that same $100,000 house on the grant list would only be worth about $129,000 for a fair market value. And so that's sort of the, the function of the CLA. Instead of applying it this way, the state applies it to those tax rates. And that's why when we get into the chart later, you'll see the NMV district tax rate kind of goes up and goes down steadily and then the, each of the individual towns' tax rates kind of fan out in this chart because they all are impacted differently from the CLA. Continuing down for that $100,000 house in Bakersfield, the budget that you warned on Town Meeting Day would have had a property tax amount on that of $1,588. If you cut that budget by a penny and do nothing else, it would bring that property tax bill down by $14. And then you can see what it would be on a $200,000 listed house, a $300,000 listed house and what you see in all four towns. Again, there's a difference between the towns, but it's relatively minor because everybody's kind of in that same boat where we've all got an old grant list and at least it seems that properties are, are all inflated the same amount compared to that. So we'll just sit there for a minute and see if there are any questions on that. I think when we are going back out to the taxpayers with, with information, we'll compare it to FY24. This is your bill in FY24. This is your bill in FY25 and show them that difference rather than comparing from one, one version of it to another. If there are no questions on that, we'll go to the next one. This came from a question that Arlene asked me about a misperception in her town. This is looking at last year's budget. We don't have it obviously for, for next year. I'm sorry, for the year that we're living in, FY24. NMV had a total education spending amount of just under $19 million. So this is the money that we did not raise locally and needed from the ed fund to support the budget for this operating year. What we've done is we split out how much of that is raised on residential tax in Bakersfield and then non-residential tax in Bakersfield and then all the way through to the, to the other three towns. So what you'll see is more than half of the budget comes from towns outside of R4. So they're coming from the ed fund generally, which is going to be residential and non-residential property tax raised elsewhere in Vermont as well as some rooms and meals tax, some lottery revenues. But I, putting that out there, and we will put this out there publicly as well because there's a perception in some of the towns that they are gold towns, which I think Montgomery may have been the first year of Act 16 and then that went away. Maybe there are several towns in the state where there is more property tax raised in their town than is spent in their town. And so they're contributing that money to the ed fund, similarly to what you would do if we fall below that yellow floor.
So it's safe to say we're looking at this that we don't have any gold towns?
We do not have any gold towns. And then the pie chart is just a graphic representation of that. So starting at 12 o'clock are the, the two pie slices for Bakersfield and Berkshire then Montgomery then Sheldon.
And I think it's important because I know that there can just be some sticker shock. I mean, granted, the figure that we were presenting the first time around was over this 18 million, more toward 22, but million and not in, you know, it's a lot of money and there's certainly some sticker shock, but when you parse it out and really understand how much of that is being borne on the, on the, on the backs of the community versus coming from the ed fund, it, I think it helps kind of demystify it a little to see it like this. It's not to suggest that the taxes are not onerous because for some people, they really are and we are really very aware of that hardship and burden for, for our people and hence trying to figure out how to thread the needle between what our taxpayers feel they can manage and what it takes to run our system.
One thing that I'm just realizing that we do not embed in this slide and I'll be brief because you know, you know, I could go on around Act 127, but I won't. So Act 127 was written to advantage systems like ours who have been historically underfunded compared to other systems across Vermont. So it took the, the formula for how you count students and it recognized that it costs more to educate some students than others. So for us, the big idea is we gained a lot of capacity with our pupil weights. So the notion behind that is that we should have been looking at adding resources to better support those students who we serve cost more to educate. We should have been adding resources in our budget to equalize some of those opportunities with other parts of the state. So there was additional spending and the idea was that it, it wasn't going to add additional tax capacity. And if we look at the district tax rate, it didn't. That first budget was still a penny below what the budget was the previous year and that had to do with the weights, which I know is really challenging to understand. But I just wanted to say that out loud because that's a, a piece that I think is easy. When we look at the education spending from this year to what was just proposed at Town Meeting Day, it's easy to not understand why there was that increase.
And just so Lynn doesn't get the last word on that, the last two slides that you looked at, looking at the property tax, neither of those are taking into account the income sensitivity payments and that's significant really across the state, but probably more so for our communities. On the next one.
Sorry, I didn't see this next slide when I asked you to talk about the yield.
That's because I moved while you were talking about something else. So we covered the yield. We'll move on to the next one.
So this is where you, where you left off really. You asked us to go back and take a look at what was in the budget. You asked us to talk with our administrators to see like what would your priorities be if you had to make some reductions in your spending plan. Also, the administrators were trying very hard to look at this through a lens of not reducing positions for people that we currently employ. So that was a big part of what we spoke about. So when we put all of those pieces together, we kind of have a, you know, escalating options for you to consider. So I'm going to actually have Morgan talk about the first one because I struggle to communicate about the after-school fees.
Sure. And the first one are, there are options, there are really not options because it was decisions by the SU board. And so the, the SU board made several cuts to the general fund budget and also we are kind of upgrading some revenue assumptions for food service. We had some good news on that front, so we think we'll pull in a little more money there. And what that did was reduce the SU assessment by $184,000. So that's in addition to the higher yield, that $184,000 reduction is sort of already part of the table. It's nothing that you need to decide on. The second line there, the 167.91 has to do with some changes in the after-school program funding. And so in a normal budget year, you would have a line item in your budget, we had them this year, to support the after-school program and both districts have taken that money in. It was about $335,000 for the proposed budget that was voted on Town Meeting Day. What the SU board agreed to do was to pull back those, not really assessment, but pull back those line items from the local budgets and we're going to be using some grant funding at the SU level to cover that. That grant funding historically has paid for part of your guidance counselors in several of your schools. And so in order to pull that after-school program back into that grant, we had to push some guidance counselors into, into your local budget. And so if you actually, if you go to the PDF next, I can show that. And so this will look a little bit familiar to you. The first column is the current year budget. The second column is the budget that we brought forward to voters earlier in the month. The third column, the 2.1 proposed, is that same budget with the assessment reduced and that change to the after-school program that we just talked about. So you'll see on line one, direct instruction, we're pulling that $335,000 out of your budget and that will be paid for out of the SU in a grant. And then under support services, the student support line, you'll see that's increasing $174,000. So that number are pieces and parts of most of your guidance counselors and that's getting pushed back into your local budget. And so that 335 less the 174 is that additional $161,000 that we've already taken out of the budget before the board starts making any decisions. And then if you go down to the bottom section on that, you can see the impact. So again, that middle column that starts with a $22.5 million figure is the, the 2.1 draft that's on the table. The dollar yield, which is the sixth line down, we've raised to $10,000. My guess is it's going to be higher than that, but we won't know, we won't have a more solid number for a few weeks, we think. That drops the equalized rate down to a $1.06. So when we, the current year we're in was $1.15. The budget that we presented to voters with sort of the best information at the time was $1.10 and we've cut another four cents off of that with the SU cuts and the change to the yield. And so that's sort of why we previewed the dollar floor discussion because as you go further, I read roughly $200,000 is going to drop that $0.06 a penny, but the legislature may also be working to increase the yield and, and those actions will also drop, drop you by a penny for every $90 that pay add to the yield. So maybe we'll sit there before we go back to the options and just see if there are any questions on that.
Are your projections, you said they're looking at
Are your projections, you said they're looking at $10,000 yield? And did you say that any projections you're putting in right now, you're using that information?
Yeah. Erin, that's where, they have enough information to predict that that's where they're likely going to land in short term. But I think that Morgan is connected enough to what's happening around the state to have a pretty strong pulse as the president of Vermont School Business Officials. And so he has a pretty good sense about the amount of money that's coming out of other budgets as they're being revoted, or as they were, from the delay to when they're actually going to go vote. So we're expecting that's going to go up even higher.
And then the last two columns on this chart, the fourth row of numbers is the difference between this version 2.1 and last year's budget. So that's kind of the real, real increase or decrease from FY '24. And then that final column is just capturing the changes from what we're discussing now compared to what we had on the ballot on Town Meeting Day.
Looks like someone has a question.
There's actually a bunch in the chat, so we thought we would, we would read them when you go to the public comment.
Okay, perfect.
And then people on the Zoom can just throw them in the chat.
Gotcha.
Courtney's getting one.
Perfect, okay.
I had a little bit of a hard time when I first looked at this, getting really clear about what this is resulting in in terms of decrease to the tax rate. Can you just say that again, Morgan? Like where exactly does this put them compared to where they were when we just voted?
Yeah, and so that equalized residential school tax line, which is about the middle of that blue box. The dollar 1515 is the tax rate for the district of this year. The next column, the dollar 1047, is what was proposed on Town Meeting Day. The dollar 633 is what would be proposed if you warned a budget with those SU changes only and a $10,000 yield, which is kind of the best current information we have at this second. The eight cent decrease, what that's saying is that you are down eight cents from that dollar 15 the current year. And then the four cent decrease, that last column, is saying we've reduced the tax rate by four cents from earlier this month.
And Morgan, do you have this chart for each of those three options?
No, but I'm going to do it on the fly.
Okay. Okay.
And so on this one, again, if you look at that fourth column, what that is showing with the CLAs is that Bakersfield tax rate would be up two cents, Berkshire up three, Montgomery up four, and Sheldon down a penny.
Want to apply the CLA?
Correct.
Which, just to remind folks, we have no control over that CLA, and it certainly affects the process.
Should we go back to options, or?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
I think that's something that we really have to address to, to the community, that they don't understand that that's what it actually is doing to their taxes, that they think they're getting a 19% increase in their tax bill.
I think there's some statewide narrative that's feeding into that.
Yes, most definitely.
And I, and I think, you know, I sent out a pretty lengthy information packet, I think this Saturday, it might have been Sunday, to try to, Sunday, to try to address that. I think that there's a difference when, like when you're making a statement like that in terms of an increase, and then you're talking about what's happening here in our budgets, it is, it's slightly different context. So I think that, I hope that people will really try hard to pay attention to what's happening in our budget specifically, and not take the statewide narrative and apply it to our circumstance.
Do you think that's what happens?
I do think that's what happens.
There's a lot of people that I spoke with just about the budget, trying to get their, their thoughts on it. And I said, why did you vote no? And they said, I can't, we can't afford a 17% increase. And I said, do you know what the, just for Sheldon, what the increase was? And I did math and checked with Morgan to make sure I was right. It was a 3.21% increase in Sheldon. So I think by using the percentages for people, I don't think typically people can wrap their head around a penny here, this penny there. I think we need to use percentages, because most people can really resonate with that. And I think if we would have gone with that narrative, or each town is, you know, here's your increase, and here's the total district increase percentage, we are not at that 17. I think it would have gone very different for us.
Or had a, have the discussion like this around actual doctors, because it says, yeah, my, my tax bill's going up.
Yep.
Thirty bucks, or a hundred bucks, or whatever it is. Question, Lisa, is there a slide that shows what the increase over last year's tax rate in each town was on the budget we presented and on what we are proposing? Yes, there's one that I think we'll cover that coming up, Lisa. Well, Courtney's working on the incoming sound. To the point around CLA, this is one of the conversations that we're trying to have with people in Montpelier, is that, you know, if you're in Bakersfield, we think it would be clear for folks if they saw on their tax bill that they were paying that same district rate, that dollar 10, or dollar 6, or whatever it is, on $134,000, rather than they have a different tax rate than Berkshire has, and that Montgomery has, and that Sheldon has, and it's paid on the $100,000? I don't know if that'll go anywhere, certainly won't go anywhere this year, but there are some people that are willing to have that conversation.
Kat, I just fixed our speaker, can you try again?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Um, I think it's clarified for me now that I see this screen, Morgan, where it shows this year's CLAs for each town that are all down about 80%, but on the screen we were just looking at, it had them all above 80%, but I'm thinking maybe that was just indicating the current year.
Correct, so this is current year.
Okay.
And the one that you were looking at before was FY '24. So you can see everybody's dropped between 5 and 9%.
But when we're looking at that, Courtney, can you just go ahead, one slide, please?
Going back to this, this one right here.
Yeah, so on this one, like when we are looking at the proposals in the far right columns, it's not using those CLAs, right? Oh, okay, sorry, I see them now. Okay, I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
And that following CLA is something that's impacting every district across the state that has not reappraised, because as I think everybody kind of knows at a gut level, property is being sold at quite a significant increase from what it's historically been valued at. Thinking, go back to 13.
So Morgan, just describe option one. Everything that you've talked about is, those are things that have changed in your budget just as a result of what happened at the, at the SU meeting on Monday. So from here, we took a look at what the principal recommendations were when it comes to budget discussions. So in option number two is a position that Sandy and I spoke about from Montgomery, because we know that that position, we won't have that position next year. It's not cutting a person from that position, we're going to be able to move forward with that. So we could reduce that without eliminating a person.
Can you explain that more?
So this person was, was a temporary license connected to it, so we can't extend the licenses. If that makes sense. So it's already known, that person already knows. Because you only get, we're in year three, and you already got an extension from two years to three years, and I can't get anymore.
What is the position?
That was an instructional coach that Sandy had at the school level.
Okay, all right.
So that's option two, where you can see that adds to the reduction to the N of V local budget, and it brings your total reduction to the budget up around $400,838. And I think, remind me, Morgan, every penny is two, $200,000, so you're at around two pennies there. And then you have other options, depending on how far you want to talk today. So you have, in option three, you have, it's additive, so it would be option one and option two, and you could choose, you added a .2 position in Bakersfield by increasing music from .8 to, to 1.0. And then you also added an SRO into your budget, you could reduce that. If you reduce both of those things, in addition to one and two, that would be $316,000. That would bring you to about two and a half cents overall at $501,000.
And this, we could potentially also consider the family, the second family engagement coordinator, not hiring that position.
Lynn, can you repeat the beginning of option two for Lisa, please?
Sure, so I was, I know I sounded a little vague there, I didn't know how much to say, because it's about, it's identifiable. There's a position in Montgomery that was filled by someone with, who was provisionally licensed, and I can't extend the license further, and that's known by that person, so they won't be returning in that position. So that's what that reduction represents in option two.
Does that leave Montgomery with no instructional coaching, then?
No, actually, we have SU instructional coaching that we have that we'll be able to push in when Montgomery has teacher turnover. We'll be able to use the SU instructional coaches to push in support.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Sandy wanted to.
Can I just ask a question? I guess part of what was in the budget for Montgomery as well was the half PE teacher and half health teacher. And I was hoping that this one person was choosing to leave, because that's what I thought was happening, and it was going to be like an even, he was halftime, and I was going to be getting that full-time position. So now that person's not leaving, so now I'm still stuck with not being able to get this full-time PE health position. So the only thing, if that amount of money stayed in the budget for this coach that's leaving, I would be able to hire that PE health teacher.
The health teacher, right?
The health, well, yes.
It's combined with the current halftime PE teacher.
Well, no, it won't be.
For next year.
That would give her a problem. A little bit different from the plan. Yeah. It's not names, and so.
Yeah.
So some of this is, we build these budgets so far in advance of the year. Situations change with staff members in terms of, you know, are they going to move forward with the license? Are they going to, are they going to return, are they not going to return? So we build on our best assumptions as we're building these, and so some of these were adjustments to the assumptions we had. So that's a good point, Sandy.
So the changes to the LEAPs, it's not an actual change in structure, so it was provided. It's just where the budget lives and how we're capturing it, so no one will feel any actual change to the service.
Thank you for saying that, I had a note and I forgot to say it. That was another theme that came through that survey. People see the tremendous value in our LEAPs programs, and this doesn't impact what the offering is. It is, it's just kind of taking things, taking your school counselors and putting them back in, and then moving, moving them out to that other funding source. And, and there's actually some additional flexibility in that funding source for the LEAPs. So it, it is an idea that Morgan came up with, I think that is, is quite wise to just pull it out.
And that's something we can continue to do long-term, it's just not like we're doing this year and we got it, okay. And the SU assessment piece, that's just, it's a numbers game. There's no actual real positions that go with that?
No, there were decisions made at the SU level, so there, there was halftime, or no, I'm sorry, an assistant HR position that we had not yet built that was pulled out of the budget. There was a reduction in the assistant curriculum director position from 260 days to 200 days. There was, there was a reduction in some of the costs, but then additional revenue, because again, we built this in the fall, and now Morgan has better numbers about revenue anticipation.
And that's in food service, you said?
And that's in food service. And then we also eliminated the K through six flexible pathways academy in the SU budgets.
And is that because you're not seeing the, the sign in that you, to keep it running, it just didn't make sense?
The numbers have declined, and the Board had to make a tough decision about where they're going to prioritize spending. So one of the things that we talked about was, as they merge districts, those kids have options as they return. They could go to their original home school, they could go to one of the other schools in their district, not across the SU, but within their own district, or they could choose home school if that model is working well for them. So that was part of what was decided.
And the deadline restrictions will be waived too for those families to, if they decide to move forward with this school choice.
And that too didn't mean anybody was losing positions, it was a shift of positions?
We knew one person had already told us they were not returning. But we have openings in, so we looked at the seniority list, and we already knew that we had some openings for interventionists across the organization. So the interventionist that was in that position has seniority, so that person would get moved and have a position. And because our FPA was serving the students in our alternative programs, the one teacher who remained in the flexible pathways will be offered to teach the students in our, in our alternative programs. So that person will be a K through six teacher for STEPS.
And about the, the food service, why, explain that to me, like what are the changes that we're looking at there?
So we reduced what we were anticipating for food costs. We just had more of a runaway of data this year. And then we reached out, or when you were going through this, we reached out to the AOE to try to get a better prediction on reimbursement rates, and they told us what they're thinking right now. It was higher than what we originally modeled, so.
No cut in terms of like quality of food, that's not a concern. I assume it's such, but I'm sure there could be a question, so I just want to make sure.
We're not feeding hot dogs every day.
My kids will love it, okay?
So something like that. I think, you know, going into this work, I think we've tried to be really thoughtful about impact and tried to be strategic in where we, if there was, you know, we're going to have to fill another position, is it something that we could reduce, one, and not lose, lose a person? And I think that the, I just want to say this out loud, because people might not understand, recruitment retention is really hard for everybody. It's a national problem right now, there are not as many people going into education, there are not as many people in pre-service programs, and we really wanted to be able to maintain the existing staff that we have. What the, the thinking is, is that we're not going to reduce, but we can guarantee what the assignment might be. So it might be that if, as other people leave, there might have to be some shifts. And this is tricky, because we're, we're having to revote and, you know, the contract deadlines that we're contending with too. So we have some other contingencies that we've thought through. If, hopefully, we don't have to do this a third time.
Contracts for teachers.
I have a question, please.
Not by school, right?
Say that one more time.
Contracts that teachers receive are for the four school districts.
Yes, so, so con, so seniority is based on district. So we have an N of V seniority list, an ER seniority list, and FNE SU. So I can't move between those three, but I can move within each of those.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you, I apologize. My device keeps going into safe driving mode and I'm not driving, so I can't see the screen. My device keeps going into safe driving mode and I'm not driving, so I can't see the slides. And I also can't access the chat. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Are there slides that you can send me via email that I can see instead of trying to view them live on my device? And also, is there a slide of these positions at the SU level? And an explanation of what's been cut out of the SU budget?
I can print out the slides and email them to you now for this budget. I don't know if we've got anything updated from the SU meeting or not.
I mean, I have a draft communication that I've been working on, but I don't have it quite the way Lisa's asking for it.
Yeah, it's just really hard to follow just by listening what you're saying about each of those positions and where they, you know, where the money has come from. I'm still stuck on option two because that was the last slide I saw. Sorry.
It's okay.
So I'll send this to you just to, to be honest now. Lynn and I are still changing them as the other person is talking, number one. And number two, we, I'll give you a full deck and we're probably not going to use them all.
So we're, these are slides that we've used for multiple meetings now. And we have a lot of communicating we're going to be doing in the next six weeks. So you're getting more than what you're asking for, Lisa. So you could just regard what doesn't make sense.
Can I, hi Christina Suarez, can I ask a question too, please?
Hi Christina. We were going to do public comment at the end of the meeting. We're cataloging everyone's questions. You could put it in the chat.
Okay.
Was that she?
Okay. So, did you say family engagement?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just trying to catch up with where we just left off. And then if I had to think about where it would put family engagement, it would probably be either after option two or after option three. And option four would be all one, two, and three reductions. And it would be the Berkshire assistant principal position that would be included in option four. So what we need from you all is to think about all of what Morgan has talked to you about in terms of where your budget has been reduced to already, what's happening with the yield, and finding that balance between how much more do you want to cut, knowing that the yield is also going to reduce your tax rate, and wanting to avoid that floor, where you're cutting resources without adding any tax benefit to your citizens.
And when are we going to know about that piece of that?
You won't know that.
Will we have to premiss before we know that?
No, you will not know that until the very end of the legislative session.
Which is when?
End of May, probably.
Don't try to subscribe the logic to it, Kat, or something.
No, no, it's not even that, Morgan. It's just complete frustration that, like, I just think that's the most fiscally irresponsible thing that we could do for our tax, is end up in that situation. So I just want to avoid that at all cost. So I'm going to come right out the bat and say I'm going to be leaning toward option one or two because I don't want to cut too much and then see that happen. That's just absolutely insane to me. And that's all I'm going to say on that.
Well, I absolutely agree with Kat. And I think if we, you know, after talking about options, doing some brainstorming, but really looking at how we're delivering this budget, the logic behind it, to our voters and helping them understand, this is the percent increase for you. This is the percent increase. This is where we sit. There are a hundred schools in the state. We are sixth from the bottom. I think we need to have a bullet, one-page, simple, simple, black and white for them. And possibly do, I mean, maybe a little meeting in every town, I don't know. But we have to be strategic to get this budget passed.
I, I mean, I am curious about option two, but with the addition of the SRO. I would rather see us eliminate the SRO position before we eliminated the family engagement coordinator. But I could also, I could also get behind not hiring. It's not eliminating the family engagement person we have, but it's not hiring the second family engagement person that was going to be split between Sheldon and Montgomery. And so then we would have the one who worked between the four schools for N M V.
You'd have to take a look at how we would divide that one.
Whether that person would have the capacity and what that would look like. But I do feel like, I question the, how meaningful that SRO position is. And could, would be curious, Morgan, to see a kind of option two A and an option two B. That's option two. The next one, two A, would be with the SRO. And then the next option two B would be with the SRO eliminated as well as that second family engagement coordinator.
I'm really confused. Where is the family engagement coordinator in any of these?
Well, it's not because I didn't have it in there as an option. It came up in earlier conversation.
Oh, okay.
So you're asking to see SU changes, instructional coach out, SRO coach out, music in or out?
Well, I think we need to talk about, about the music piece. And I know that is difficult territory around this position. I mean, what we're saying is we're trying to avoid the additive pieces while maintaining the positions we have. That we really are committed, what I hear, is that we're really committed to not eliminating any existing positions. But what we're really trying to focus on is where can we wait? Delay a year or two, or not, or a position that may not end up being needed, like the SRO position. So that music, that point-two is an additive piece. You know, I see Montgomery, you know, giving up that instructional coaching and relying on SU instructional coaching. Yeah, so I mean, I think we need to discuss that.
So you were really looking at option three then?
Right.
That's what you're saying. So you were going to say option three rather than two A or two B?
It's going to give us a half a cent.
Yeah.
Right, option two is two cents.
Well, I was originally like thinking of option two with the S just piecing out, pulling out the, you know, leaving the music for now.
Okay, I see, just yeah.
Pulling out the SRO and that family engagement coordinator. I'm not saying.
So that would be the two A and the two B?
That was what, I mean, just another version that leaves that music intact. But I also feel like we need to, you know, discuss whether we add that. I mean, I do feel as though that assistant principal for Berkshire feels really important and needful.
I think, Mary, the more we add to the options, or the further down the row we go in the options with all of the things going on, we're getting close to that salary. I think it's too much. I think you have, there's potential there.
And I know that we want to be mindful of our taxpayers. I really get that, we want to show them that we are coming back and thinking about this. But I also want our money to stay in our district. I don't want to go so low that we're now paying for other people's education.
Right.
So Morgan, can you tell me, option one, what does that take our tax rate to?
Option is this one, right?
Yes.
So it's the dollar six?
Dollar six thirty-three. And I just sent option three to Courtney, so.
But it takes a long time.
Once it gets there, then she'll be able to put that up.
It takes the, it takes the N M V tax rate to that, but not the town, not each town with the C L A?
Correct. So the district tax rate would be a dollar six thirty-three. And then if you follow that middle column down, you'll see that Chrisville would be a dollar forty-three, Berkshire a dollar thirty-seven, Montgomery a dollar thirty-eight, and Sheldon a dollar forty-one.
And the floor applies at the district level?
I'll say that, the dollar six is the one we're looking at.
Correct, right.
The floor. And then I will switch things on the fly from option three, which Courtney's about to put up.
And I just want to clarify and make sure that what Sandy brought up, that if we are eliminating an option two, that point-five, I was a little unclear about whether that is going to impact Sandy's ability to have that health and PE person. And so I.
Can I try to say this in another way? Yeah, just as Morgan, if he had put zero dollars in for that health PE position.
You want to take it back out?
So we have a one-point-oh health teacher in the N M V budget, or a one-point-oh shared health gym teacher. If the, we have enough money, if we end up hiring a new person, if the current person who's currently halftime comes back, we won't have enough money to bring them full-time. And they would not, they would not take full-time. So we have a one-point-oh with what we think we know now about people's decisions for next year. We probably don't have enough money. But what I would say is that there's a lot we don't know about who's coming back and who's making call movements and things like that. And so, got the position in there. We will, as we go forward through hiring season, look at who's applying, whether it's something we could afford, even if we can find somebody who wanted it at halftime. Does that help? Does that help explain it?
It does. I guess I was hoping that, knowing that that person, that halftime position was leaving, that that would have been the money to pay for the health PE teacher, even though that other person was now staying. And I was also contemplating using that current halftime PE person in a different capacity.
Is it?
A different.
I think you should be careful about how far we go with this conversation.
I know, please go ahead, Karen.
You also could think about the order of what you just said. Like, if I'm hearing what Sandy's saying, like, this would have worked until we found out that one of our assumptions is now changed. So it impacts what she's able to think forward to in, around that help. So you could think about if the SRO or the family engagement was the next place that you wanted to go, that you could maybe bump that ahead of Montgomery's.
Yeah. I would rather do that. I would rather do that if that's important to kind of maintain in the budget for Montgomery's building needs. I'd rather, I'd rather forego with the SRO first and then the family engagement person. Second, it's a little tough on that family engagement piece because I love, I'm not as in tune with what they're doing and how vital or not they're proving to be. I mean, I know we're kind of new with these positions. On, you know, the sound of it is excellent. In practice, I'm curious, is the value there for the families and our students and the community?
I feel like it is. You'd want me to talk to that. I mean, the person who was in that current position has done a lot of work this year specific to attendance and kids who are absent a lot. And not just in the sending the letters and all of those requirements that we're going to do. But she has gone out to those families, she has been in those houses, had meetings with them on a regular basis. Also had some meetings with some other tricky situations that have, you know, around some DCF things and all of those kinds of things. So she's just been involved, and I feel like it's been very valuable. Yeah.
And we're smaller. And honestly, I said that I could live without that position. If that position stayed, it could be divided then by three towns instead of four. We're in a different position, and I think we can handle it on our own.
Yeah.
So I would give that up.
The thinking, the thinking with the two is that Sheldon went this year without one because someone who left late in the game last year kind of was playing that role. And so the new person didn't really take that role on. So the thinking was the added person would give some support to Sheldon. If you do reduce it, my thinking is that I would go back to the table and look at, I think Sandy's okay with where she's at. If we, if it was one person, look at how we could support Bakersfield, Berkshire, and Sheldon with the one. It is tight because there's a lot of need. But I would rather see, if you're asking me the order, it would be SRO and then family engagement. And then you would start to get into the Montgomery and then the other.
Yes. Have some of the things that, I don't know if you can answer it without bringing confidentiality, but when we first started discussing this, there were some pretty heavy things happening. And we were taxing the Ennisburg-Richford side.
Of the other.
Right. Is, do we feel like that is still occurring? Like, is the environment still there?
It's so, it's so tricky because it doesn't happen consistently, but it does happen. And, I mean, so far, it's fine. They're generous enough to say, you know, we can hop over and help in those situations. And, you know, certainly talked with the sheriff about that, and he seems okay with those situations. So I think that, I understand the thinking, and the thinking is good. And we could, we could table this for now, if you pull this out of this budget. There are some grants at the national level that we could explore around school safety where it might just be one of those things that we say, not now, not yet. But we could go out and we could explore some of the grant funding opportunities for a position like that.
I'm a huge fan of having the SRO. But if I had to pick between the family engagement and the SRO, I would keep the engagement coordinator in first.
Kat?
Lynn, can you just repeat what you said a couple minutes ago, what order you would recommend? I could hear.
I said SRO, family engagement, and then back to the instructional coach position in Montgomery.
That's an order of what you would keep or get rid of first?
I would eliminate first.
Okay. And like the building leaders, are they in agreement with like SRO not being the top priority? And I do like what you said too, like, you know, not now, maybe later, but.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we're in agreement.
I mean, that's.
Yeah, I'm curious, yeah.
It seems like maybe we want to revamp, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I know that sometimes, and SRO is kind of one of those positions where it's sort of like, sometimes you don't realize you need one until you really need one.
Yeah, absolutely.
I will say this, as of right now, is it the most urgent thing that I see? No. But I also do feel like there are some times where a school might be hit with a crisis, where it's helpful to have that SRO. And more so than that also, having the SRO there present in the district would help us with prevention as well. And I feel like I say this adage a lot, but it's, a lot of times it's better to prevent a fire than to repair the damage after one has been done. I can tell you that there was an event last year at Berkshire where I think the presence of an SRO could have helped prevent that. And there's still some trauma in the community from it as well.
I think that the, one of the reasons for the thinking about the SRO was just in terms of our proximity generally to law enforcement. And some situations when you have something happening and it's a really challenging situation, it's tough to be in it for forty-five minutes. So I think our thinking about it was good thinking, but I think we are having to make some really challenging decisions tonight. And that could be one of those positions that we could try to look at a different way. Or again, next year.
I'm just, sorry. I'm just really worried still about reaching the bottom and that there's thirty other districts. Basically, I was having the same issues right now and going back to their voters. I just don't want to get rid of two. I just don't want to get rid of too much and then be where we don't want to be, below the dollar.
So based on-
And is there a way to, is there a way to, if people are comfortable with keeping some of this stuff? But I mean, we, I don't know, never mind.
So that's it. Up on the big screen right now is the cuts contemplated through option three. And that ends you at a dollar five fifty-nine. If instead of that, you cut, you took the SU cuts and you cut the family engagement coordinator and the SRO position and left everything else as it is, you would be at a dollar five fifty-five. And if you cut only the SRO, you would be at a dollar five ninety-one.
Down from the dollar ten four seven.
Yes, and down from the dollar fifteen fifty this year.
Fifteen, fifteen the year before.
Yeah.
I mean, I really hear we don't want to push down toward that, the bottom there and be losing that tax capacity that we had hoped to get from Act one twenty-seven. And I, I too feel like the positions that are the most student-focused are the ones that we have hoped to really preserve. It's possible that the community will still feel like it's not, not enough. I think that's where our messaging will become really important, so we can explain it. And I mean, hopefully, people will watch these discussions too and see, you know, that we're all really here with our kind of hearts and our minds trying to kind of land in a good place that honors the message from the voters and also the needs of the system and our students. I would love to preserve as many of these pieces at Montgomery, at Bakersfield, the assistant principal, the family engagement quarters, people. I mean, that really resonates with me if we're really talking about our students and what's in the best interest of our students than these people that are trying to get to the kids that aren't coming to school and aren't benefiting from all the things that they need in the school system and helping on that level. And that does seem like a lot for one person to manage. We may not be able to hire that position. I mean, we've been in that position too, where we have these job openings and we can't actually find the people to fill those. I suppose if it doesn't end up being enough, then we can come back and do another round. But right, what it sends I get from everyone is you'd rather kind of ease into the cuts and not be so dramatic that we miss this opportunity with the yield that will benefit us as other districts, as other systems continue to cut their budgets and re-vote.
I sense you working your way towards the public comment part, and I just wanted to address, Lisa had asked about seeing two slides, although I guess you can look at them now in PDF. But this one is the homestead tax rate, the history from FY twenty, the first year of unification, to the current year, FY twenty-five. And so that last black dot all the way to the right is the one that we're talking about now. And this was current as of option one today. And then if you go to the next slide, Courtney. This is overlaid with the four district tax rates. So you can see in the first two years, when the, the tax rate for the district was relatively flat, there was sort of a gradual incline, relatively flat on those district tax rates. When we're in a very different real estate market, twenty-two to twenty-three, the, the district tax rate drops significantly. The town tax rates, not so much, as that market was heating up. And then you really see them diverging, twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-four to twenty-five, where that district tax rate is still falling pretty precipitously. But the town-level tax rates are increasing gradually, moderately, I'd say, because of the, because of the CLA. And then on this one, if you look, kind of the dollar is that bottom line. And so, no matter where you end up tonight, if the trends keep occurring in the state, we may be having this conversation in the next budget year as well because we have been on a pretty significant decline the last four years.
So it's kind of opposite the statewide narrative.
Right.
Right? And so that, that's the piece. That, that slide that you're looking at right there is a pretty impactful slide that shows what the part that we can control, the black piece, what our district tax rate is, that's based on our spending and the path that that's been on. But it's the property value of the CLA, it is really driving people. You know, it, that's where you're feeling the pain in your tax bill.
Morgan?
Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt whoever was just starting to speak, but I appreciate the slides. I've seen them before, but that wasn't exactly what I was looking for and I apologize. Maybe I'm not being clear. But what I wondered is if we have a slide that we could show voters exactly how much of a percentage their tax is going up each year, year over year. Like from last year to this year, you know, the narrative statewide is your tax is going to go up twenty percent. We know ours isn't going to go up twenty percent. But what is the actual percent with the budget we presented that our tax rates would go up in each town? We probably have to break it out by town. And then with whatever new budget we propose, what will be the percentage that our tax rate is going up? To the best of our knowledge, I know the yield could change. I'm not banking on it and I don't think anybody else should bank on it. I think we should go with that ten thousand dollar number right now and make our decisions based on that.
So Lisa, are you asking to see the increase year over year of the post-CLA tax rate or the increase year over year of the property tax bill for a set property?
Um, I think either one would be helpful. And I understand that the CLA is something that we don't control, but what people are voting on is how they get hit in their pocketbook. And that is the actual amount of money that they have to write their check for to the town clerk for their property taxes. So however that can best be conveyed to people, that we're not talking about a twenty percent tax increase in Berkshire, for instance. But maybe we're talking about a, I don't know what it is because that information has not been presented to the voters. I've had people give me various ideas of what they think their taxes are going to go up and I don't think they're accurate. So I would like to see it in a graph or in writing or in a chart.
Yeah, I think we've all been having those conversations in town. I won't have something for you tonight, but I can come up with some ideas and share them with you and we can sort of get to what you're looking for.
Sure, based on whatever we decide this evening, I think that would be really helpful as we move forward and you could probably bring that to the public education piece. Thanks.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I think that might be, I mean, a little bit what Lynn was saying, you know, all the books of, you know, coding for dummies and everything. Not to suggest that people are dummies, but this is incredibly complicated and somewhat inaccessible. What's more accessible is kind of what Lisa's talking about. Because what I contended with in my community was people just drew, saw the amount it went up and, and figured, calculated quickly in their heads that percentage and then assumed automatically that that was how much taxes were going up.
Right, right.
And it could, and just drew that through line. And I, I understand it, but that's where this piece of kind of helping people understand as best we can, this really complicated funding system for education and tax rates. And even, right, like this, you know, removing what our tax rate down hopefully to, you know, one, one point oh-six or one point oh-five, I still think that's a little intangible. And what Lisa's saying is we want to say, okay, it's a, maybe that on the hundred thousand, the two hundred thousand, the three hundred thousand dollar home, what is that, like that actual dollar amount in a percentage? That's, I think, is what people under, you know, understand more easily.
I do think that, I, I hear what you're saying about the percentage. I think the slide that Morgan shared with you earlier, the impact of one cent in looking at like, do you know what your property value is in each of your communities? And looking at for each penny that the, either the yield or the spending decrease reduces from where it was, what's the difference? So you know, if you have a two hundred thousand dollar home in Bakersfield, for every penny that we just talked about tonight, that's twenty-seven dollars on your tax bill that you'll save. So I think that piece is helpful and maybe, and Morgan's very savvy when it comes to creating these visuals, so I have faith that he'll figure something out with the percentages.
I think it's important to know that we really make it clear that going below that one isn't going to save you any money.
Right.
That you are still, that's, because I think some people think that the more we lower it, the more I save. And that there is a point where it's not going to make a difference, but your kids will lose out.
Taxpayers, pay attention to the raw difference between year to year. The one thing that we haven't talked about, there's nothing we can do about it, that we have to articulate too, is what Morgan wrote up about the amount of students leaving the high school, the amount of students, et cetera. That's like a million dollars. That's one big number we need to get that word out there also.
That's a really good point, John. Like before we even began work at the board level, we came to you and said, you're already in a million dollars in the hole before you start building the budget because you've got more high school students going in than leaving. So that-
And we did communicate that in all of our informational meetings. And I know that, that was a million dollars. We have, we have forty-four outgoing and eighty-something incoming for our, but, you know, reminding people that was huge. And then this piece around the health insurance is also that, you know, we're double-digit increases, sixteen percent this year, thirteen percent last year. So that's thirty percent nearly in two years, just for health insurance alone. And we, that is nothing that we have any control over. So there's just a few of these, these components that really are big dollars that this board doesn't have any control over.
We'll go to the health insurance piece in the FAQs that we're going to build because I think there are a lot of people in our communities that believe that we still negotiate around healthcare and, you know, it's statewide. It's negotiated at the state level. So whatever the increase is, it is, we know that's not, this board can't control that or change that.
Um, so I wonder if this might be a good time to circle back to our public comment and then after the, we, the board is able to kind of hear and people's thoughts, answer and clarifying questions, and then we can maybe kind of figure out where we're all gonna, where we're going to land on it. So maybe I'll start-
Mary, could I make a comment quickly?
Certainly.
Based on what was just said?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry about that. I think that it's really important to take the idea that John had and what Lynn just said and put it somehow with the proposed new bright budget numbers. And it's really important to keep it at like a one-page handout that people can either read on their mobile devices or that they pick up, you know, when they're going to vote. I think both of those concepts are really good, but to keep it very short. Thanks.
And I'd like to follow Lisa's comment, please, Christina?
Um, yeah, hold, oh, okay, go for it, Christina. Thank you. Christina Swarzbrad, Montgomery. So I think part of the mis-messaging is that people are, these are too big a numbers that, that people can't digest. What that messaging needs to be is short and to the point of exactly what their tax dollar bill is going to change. And I know that we have to be transparent and say that we know that this, this is not what's going to happen because it's going to keep changing until May in the legislature and everything is finally set. But to say, this is what my SU is doing tonight and I'm not, they're trying to tag back and forth. You know, in one town, yep, you might see two hundred dollar increase and another town you might see seventy-five dollars, that's your yearly tax bill. And if you tell people you're paying two hundred extra dollars a year, but you might lose your SRO that your kid you know has a connection with, that you might lose your music teacher, that, that putting that out there versus all of these very complex slides that you have is incredibly important and is going to touch people more than anything else.
Thanks, Christina.
Do you want to clarify that the, what, what we're talking about tonight is not a reduction in PRA that already exists in what has been put out there right now. It's not that, there is one piece, but it, it isn't a reduction in staffing levels. Most of these were increases that the board had contemplated or totally new positions.
You just were showing option one, we're cutting, this is a position that would have to be cut.
No, not cut, just not added. These were going, if these things were targeted first, were going to be additions, new positions that we have not, that we had budgeted for but not filled.
Right, right.
Not existing positions.
Okay. My apologies that that was not clear, but, okay.
Your message was still important, Christina.
And you're not wrong in that there were, as we moved through those options, there were some potential reductions. The Pete, the point five at Montgomery for the interventionist, the point two for the music, that was an additional, well, I guess that was not addition, that was added.
Yeah, so it's not a reduction from what you currently had, it was not adding.
Not adding.
And the cuts that we're making are reducing opportunities that we were hoping to provide to our listeners.
Right, yeah.
But we are not eliminating jobs of that people are currently in.
Is that, is that clear, Christina?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so I know we had, you had a bunch of questions in the chat, but I'm going to let you, because I know you have some time.
Yeah, I'm trying to run out.
Yeah, I want you to be able to speak before you. Do you mind telling us your name?
Yeah, my name's Daniel Rourke, I'm from Bakersfield.
Okay.
But, so originally I was coming, pushing really for the music program that we had. It's nice to see that it's down to option three. I wasn't sure where it would really fall into it. But I knew based on the email Monday, we're doing some cuts, or Sunday, I'm sorry, some cuts were coming. And I just looked through some things as far as the benefits to the music program, music for the school. Starting off really just music in general, talked about heart healthy, elevates moods, reduces stress, relieves symptoms of depression and stimulates memories. All sounds like things probably students should do when they enter a building, if you ask me, before they start school day and probably before they go home at the end of school day as well. I found one study by PBS from two thousand twelve, so a little dated, but it looks like it's still relevant. That learning music facilitates learning other subjects, enhances skills that children inevitably use in other areas. Ages two through nine is a breakthrough area in music to benefit language development. Children come into the world ready to decode sounds and words. Music education enhances those natural abilities. Growing up in a musically rich environment often is advantageous for children's language development. It breaks, it makes the brain work harder, which in turn helps with all the other subjects that are going. And then, since we're concerned about test scores, it improves test scores based on a two thousand and seven study, which I couldn't find one to negate that, dating back to then, that says they will score twenty-two hundred, or twenty-two percent higher reference to English, twenty percent higher math scores on standardized tests compared to schools with low-quality music programs and it's regardless of socioeconomic disparities among the schools or the school districts. Another study from two thousand and twenty-three, from the benefits of music education for children, Connections Academy by Pearson, talks about cognitive development. Children exposed to music often improve language development and memory, have better attention spans and mathematical capabilities. Their emotional growth, music provides a safe place for children to express and learn about their emotions. I remember last time we talked about social, emotional learning was a big one that we're pushing, so kind of falls in line, I think, there. Social skills, whether it's choir or band or informal jam session, children learn teamwork, cooperation, leadership and effective communication. leadership and effective communication when they participate in group musical activities. And just so recently on a, any football fans, the New Heights podcast with Jason Travis Kelsey, Jason Kelsey just put out in his retirement ceremony from the Eagles, which we don't really like that team, but Eagles, that he thanked, he specifically thanked his band director from high school. He was a saxophone player in high school and he linked it to playing in band helped him excel as a football player and really in anything. He said taught him the value of practice. Nothing clearly teaches you more about practice than learning instrument. The first time you pick it up, you're horrible. He specifically said, you're horrible. But as you practice, you learn and become better. He also talked about tempo, that you never pick up a song and started at full speed and it was applied everything he did in football and everything to that extent. You slow it down, you work on your fundamentals and then you move on. All of a sudden you can hit it off. So Bakersfield, I think everybody agrees, has a great music teacher. We've lost three in the past and really I wouldn't see a reason for her to stay if she couldn't get this extra one, if she gets another opportunity somewhere else too. Looking at it, two of the positions you talked about too, luckily that I was pushing for as far as to be less important than music, was the SRO, was the SRO first listed? I think that's the one. It was the family engagement coordinator. So the SRO, I really didn't understand. One SRO for four schools, puts them in the building one and a quarter times a week. Murphy's Law tells you if anything happens, it's when they're in the other school. So and we talked about response. They're not getting there in time or anywhere. Also to me, bringing an armed person into the school, I assume the SRO is armed, I could be wrong, but bringing an armed SRO to the school for contract resolution, just asks you to escalate the issues right there. The second they step into a room with a weapon on their hip, it's probably whatever tensions is escalated. Do our local statistics actually show that we need SROs? Are we seeing weapons in schools at alarming rate? Again, I don't know that answer. I'm just asking. So are the behaviors out of school out of control? And just one example I give, so I was a recruiter for the Navy in South Side of Chicago. We had high schools that we were not allowed to go into on a daily basis because every lunchroom had a fight, every lunchroom had a stabbing, that kind of stuff. Those schools needed SROs. They had SROs. They had metal detectors, all that kind of stuff. I don't think Franklin County schools are at that level where they're needing SROs in and around the area. I think it just kind of looks to a certain group of people we're trying to make happy that we have that in the building. And the family engagement coordinator, I've heard some stuff on what they do. I really didn't know what they did, what their responsibility is. My assumption was as new students come into the area, they probably would check on that, make sure they're, I can't think of the word, but making sure they're aligned with the school, everything's going well. Maybe students that are coming into a foster home, new into the schools or within. And I applied to both of those and have never seen or heard from the family engagement coordinator. So I'm not really sure the need for that. My classroom teachers for all of our kids have checked in with the kids, have checked in with us. Guidance in the school has checked in. The essential teachers, like the music teacher in school, checked in with all of them. I saw Ms. Westbrook on the call earlier, so I put her in because she has checked in with all of them. I think she's the math interventionist in the school. I'm glad I had that title right. And then just last thing, well, last thing, but page, but the school budget that we were talking about. So I think we owe it to our teachers, our parents, kind of everybody within the school to make sure that they can go into the school and not worry about what they're doing next year, what their job is next year, if they have a job. It sounds like luckily all the options I think are that, which is nice. But it'd still be nice if we could actually provide them with a budget and, I say we as in the community, not you guys. Because we're screwing that up, but. Like we talked about the fear of dropping below 1.0 threshold, we're going to pay for other districts money. Me being petty sometimes, I feel maybe that's what we need. Maybe we need to drop to 0.95 and we can tell all this community who didn't like the budget initially proposed. Don't worry, we've now given money to other towns, so they will get the budgets they want it. Enjoy. And then maybe next year, when you propose a budget, they'll approve the budget because it's what it should have been originally. We need to engage a little more. We talked about it some. So since the last town, since town meeting day, I just looked at Bakersfield and the Franklin Northeast Union. We've only really had like two posts at Bakersfield and four from the union as far as what's going on with budgets and that kind of stuff on their Facebook pages. So if we push, I think more of that stuff out. Morgan will probably upset me, but I think if Morgan did a traveling for town road show briefed all this stuff, it would be a lot easier. Like I've been to two meetings. I feel like I'm almost a budget expert now that it makes it easier to take my money. We complain about spending. We're in the bottom 10 of the schools, I think are about to be. So we're not spending anything. We're the ones who are, I think we talked about, like you said, so we're not giving anybody, we're taking the handouts. We're taking over fifty-five percent from someone else. Yeah, so I looked it up. I told them I was coming in like, to equate to a baseball team, we're the Oakland A's of the school districts and a lot. So we spend, they spend forty-four million and the average payroll is a hundred and fifty million a year. So we're not spending anything when you look at that chart. But we wonder why we can't win. You guys, the principals, I see on the school board, like the general managers, the communities, the owners and the fans, we're going to complain that you're not winning, but we're not going to give you the money to win. And the teachers are out there, the players, they're going to go where they can get some money once they've got some time, but no one blames them. And then just to close, so I'm a product in this district. My mom will like when I say it, but my highest education here is a high school diploma. So I have some college. I did do some formal training. But the only piece of paper I have is a high school diploma from a school in this district. Standardized tests are not my thing. So as we talk about testing, I did not do well in standardized tests at all. But through my education and through my learning, I was still able to get one of the second highest, second hardest schools in the Navy below Navy nuclear power. So what I went through was just below that as far as toughness. And through that, I rose from a E1 when I started to I retired as an E9, the highest rank I could get enlisted. Like that just from my head, high school education in this school system. I think the original budget that you submitted wasn't even enough to make sure our kids are set up, prepared for that. And now we're going to be stuck cutting it because you just have to unfortunately, like, like say if you go option one, the smallest cuts we can get, they want cuts, so we're going to have to show them cuts. And then we're going to complain about why you guys can't do everything much to do in our schools. That's all. Thank you.
You should stay in here. How many schools, Morgan, and I will be visiting and communities will be visiting this month.
All right. So I'm just after 2:30.
We'll take four.
Thank you.
Chat questions?
Uh, yeah, let's move forward with those.
Okay. So I just want to let you know that the chats were coming as a conversation. So they're kind of like way from the beginning. Okay. Christina, I'm not going to ask your first question, so I believe you just asked it out loud.
Yeah, I think it, here.
Okay.
Sorry, again, I'm toggling between two different videos. So. Thank you. I think you addressed it, but again, just my point is it really push, we can revoke this budget and just really push what people are actually going to pay, what their increases will be. Let them know it's transparent. We could put, it will potentially change by the state. And here's, okay, option one, I guess you're saying it's potential increases that we were hoping for, we're not actually getting rid of programming that existed. But if we keep dropping down this scenario, that's possible. And I think that that's what you need to push the taxpayers, that you're still potentially going to have to cut possible programming.
Okay. So the next question is, why didn't we use the ground money before for the LEAP's program?
So we had historically been using that to offset guidance counselors. That was a decision that was probably in place before I started here. There's a somewhat limited number of things that we can use the Medicaid money for. We started having conversations about whether we could use it for the after-school program. It has some flexibility that would also benefit the after-school program. And so we've learned this here that there are other places that are using for that and it's going to pass the, the state's eligibility test.
Sorry, as more chats come in, my thing goes all wonky. Okay. Another thing was I, I proposed we revoke the same budget. My understanding is that we can. Don't show percent, show here's how many top dollars your tax bill will increase or decrease, but be transparent that the state can still change this. Then give a list of exactly what would get cut from each school for each option. It just, it needs to be real, not just numbers on a slide. Another question was, can our high school principals speak to the needfulness of the SRO? And I had sent a private message that just said that there are no high school principals in this board. And that kind of sold that one. And then what's the difference between an SRO and a state police?
So a, a school resource officer would be someone who would be contracted, under contract with us through the sheriff's office most likely, that would afford, throughout the school day would be assigned just to duties within our four, our four schools. State police, as far as I know, don't do anything like that. The state police cover certain communities. The, this part is a little confusing to me too. I struggle to understand sometimes which communities are covered by the sheriff's contract and which communities are covered by the state police. But the state police would be more a resource that we would use if we had an incident, that they would respond to a specific incident. The SRO would be there more proactively.
Somebody left a comment that said, I really liked Mary's idea. And I believe that is when you began speaking about the SRO and using, and using that. I believe that was during that timeline. Okay. So I'm just reading this one for, for them. Why are all of the options taken away from staff who have direct contact with students? These schools are short-staffed and struggle with teacher and staff retention. We need to address this with enough budget reductions. I think we need to push forward with educating the community and making as little reduction as possible right now. Just a comment. And then the last question was, will the new principal in Bakersfield cause a budget increase?
I think we're going to see budget swings in both directions from everybody that we hire at the, for this season. That's pretty normal. We just, for folks' knowledge, and several of you have been through this process before, we tend to keep the same people in our budget, even if we know that they're retiring or we anticipate they're retiring, we anticipate hiring cheaper for them. We also don't necessarily add money for people who are thinking that they're going to make a call movement. And we find that generally in a normal year, those things wash out. When we are up at or above twenty percent changes in staff each year, the person-to-person budget doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
And that's all I got.
Is that everything from there? Okay. So Morgan, do you think you could go back to the options slide?
The options slide, you said?
Oh, yes. Sorry, Courtney.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry. I have to reshare my screen.
Can I just, so are you closing public comment? I just wanted to honor, I think Ally had said she wanted to speak.
Oh, sorry. I had forgotten that. Yeah, no, I'm absolutely happy to circle back. Right. She had her hand up at the beginning of the meeting. Yeah. Ally, are you still interested in public comment?
Yeah, I can. I mean, I, I'm here just listening again. You guys are getting to know me at a pretty intimate level, I feel like now. But yeah, I'm just keeping track of this conversation, obviously, because it impacts my school, my position, my students, our students. And you know, I'm just, I'm just here to listen in, but also continue to advocate for the point two increase for the music program, just for really, I think the, the interest and the need is clear at then, the schedule, the students, and the growing program will benefit greatly from it. And I just thank you for all the work that you're doing and sorting through all this stuff. And I appreciated all the thought that you've been putting into it as well. And sorry I couldn't be there. I'm under the weather today. Of course, it was like the best ski day today, but anyway. Our school went skiing today and I couldn't go with them because I was sick and that was very disappointing. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you and I'm here to answer any questions or anything. And I just wanted to, yeah, just thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ally. Appreciate your thoughts. I hope you feel better. So it seems if I'm going to just try to capture what I've been hearing from everyone, that we want to be cautious with not cutting too deep as we get toward that one dollar threshold. We are also trying to be really mindful about not taking away opportunities from our students, which is part of what the amazing kind of beauty of Act 127 was intended to do, to allow us to increase our offerings to our students and to the community without the tax hit that we would have otherwise had if those yield, if those waiting numbers had not shifted the way they did. It really is an excellent opportunity for us and I hope we can continue to, to capitalize on it. But that said, we, it seems as though they, we, this board, I get the sense that people are open to some degree of, of cuts. We obviously have option one is just done, is kind of happening vis-à-vis, you know, no impact to LEAPs. And at the SU level, that's already been decided and that helps our assessment to the SU. I feel as though I would rather not hire the SRO than impact that point five MES position. That's my first, you know, my personal feeling around it. And I personally could be, get behind not hiring that second family engagement coordinator, although I'm hesitant because I really do see the value of that, that position. But it seems to me that not many of us have an appetite for cutting any positions that are like pulling back these things that direct, are, you know, directly serving students, correct? Am I reading the room correctly?
So if, if you were to take the SU cuts and the SRO only, you would end up with a district tax rate of a dollar five ninety-one. So nine cents below what it was last year. In terms of local impacts, it looks like it's, ranges from three and a half cents up to a penny and a half down, depending on the town. And that's because of the change in the CLA.
Yeah.
If you took that and the, and the engagement coordinator, that district tax rate would go down to a dollar five fifty-five.
I'm not sure that that moves the needle enough to be more losing that opportunity for, for helping those families and those students that really do benefit from that position. I mean, we're just talking like, it's just, it's such a small amount of impact for on the tax rate, but such a large amount of impact on the students and the families.
So I'm hearing option one plus SRO. Is that what I'm hearing?
I agree with that on the grand scheme. I know my own personal opinion might be a little bit different. I, I heard what the gentleman said about, we don't have it in our schools. We don't know what's in our schools. We don't know what's in kids' backpacks. I work from home and I know every time a state trooper flies by my house on 105, I pray to God they're not going to Sheldon School. Because I feel like every parent in the country who has lost a child would have said, I, I never thought that would happen to me until it happened to them. And I think that aside from just the crisis, immediate crisis intervention and the ability to maintain safety and hold down a building, I think it's really important that kids understand that law enforcement, they, they're a valued member of our communities. They are our friends. And they also can help as a liaison and almost like their own family engagement coordinator because I have seen SROs, no parents, help kids at home. It, it, it's a position like no other. It's not, this is a cockpit school. That's not what it is. And I think changing the stigma around that. I've known several SROs who have loved their jobs and loved their kids. And the value that it brings is significant in the super scary world that we live in. I think it's easy to assume that we don't need a cockpit. Um, I think it's easy to assume that we don't need a cockpit school. They're not a cockpit school. It's more, um, I understand at the same time, though, we need this budget passed. We need to educate our kids. Um, but if it ever came up again, I'm, I'm a strong support of having one.
And I think you're, I think you're right on. I think that proactive piece of having SRO is huge. I don't know that at this time we can do it exactly.
Nope, I'm unword of that.
Yep, and I think you're right. We need to keep it in there as, this is where we wanna go.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up an example, because recently, um, I've reached, we've reached out to Customs because they come on campus just because they, they would be in an emergency, a first responder. They came in and I was thinking it was gonna be a very casual walkthrough. And just from that experience, they really opened my eyes. I mean, they were looking through different areas and they were like, "Look, these are the things, you know..." Of course, this is the worst-case scenario, but God forbid there were to be ever a crisis on the campus. I mean, they were looking at things just corners, layouts, which rooms led to other rooms. Um, they actually spoke to me about a couple of things that they'd like me to do as well just to help with, with prevention and things that I just never would have thought of. Things such as, okay, if there's a crisis and, you know, we need to get into the building, do we have access to keys to get into the building? Because your doors are locked. Do you, do we have access to get into the security camera systems to see from there so that we know what we're walking into? And it's just, an SRO, and once again, I think in terms of just prevention and help for the community, having that, at least from my perspective, could be a benefit just to, once again, help us think proactively to keep our campus safe. And of course, that's a very extreme example I brought up, but there are a lot of things between that point and where we're at now that we may never think about that, that an SRO would help us with.
Well, and I, I do hear, I really value your thoughts, Emily, and I, I appreciate that. And I think that, at, for the future, I absolutely feel, you know, that it would be great to look at again. I do not wanna close the book. And I wonder if in lieu of this at the moment, if there are other resources in the community that we may be able to draw on in the short term as far as some of those kind of analyses of like safety at the buildings and what they were pointing out at Berkshire. And maybe there's a way to get some of that kind of insight and process started with the, the services and the resources that we have without having to hire that position in the, in the moment.
I think we, we have already worked on a lot of those things. And all of our schools have Knox boxes, I believe, so that they do have access. That person that came, though, I don't know why that person doesn't know that. So maybe we should follow up on that. So they all, all of our law enforcement partners are supposed to have access to our Knox boxes to be able to get it.
Right.
And some of the things that you're talking about, um, within the last ten years? Two or three years? We've partnered with different law enforcement agencies to, that come into our buildings and they've looked at the layout and they have, um, you know, we have some law enforcement agencies that spend the sheriffs in the past. Order Patrol and State Police have done, where they've come in and they've run trainings to be familiar just with our company. So, we, I don't want people to leave this thinking that we haven't done any of those. Like Gavin wouldn't have any way of knowing like what, what has happened in the past. So, we will follow up to make sure that they have, that a particular person has what they need, but...
And actually, I will just put a shout-out to our state police because we have had them come to our building when needed and, in the past, like five years that I've been there. And a couple incidences in particular that I can think of, they stayed for quite a while and really de-escalated some situations and, and did a lot of work with students and the family that, um, you know, was very beneficial. So I will say that we, we have had the benefit of having some of that. And I think that an SRO position is important and we should keep it on the table to look at in the future. But I would agree that it's probably not the highest priority right now.
Kat?
Um, I just have two questions and just wondering if, when you have an SRO position to be shared more for schools like ours, I mean, is that someone who's physically like located in the buildings and shares their time with, or?
So, we've never had this model before, what we were imagining for this year, um, or this next year. My thinking, without having a ton of consultation time, obviously, because there wasn't an actual SRO attached to this thinking yet, was that there would be a equitable rotation, but an unpredictable equitable rotation, so that people know that SROs are engaged in our schools, but not when the SROs are engaged in our schools. So it's part of what I was thinking, where it would be some proximity, some like in-the-building time. So we, we would have built that model out, Kat, had we moved forward with that position.
Okay, and my second question is if we went with, for example, option one, and so said we were gonna do all of this stuff, but then kind of like hold on some of this stuff that we're on the fence about until that main decision is made, can that happen? Or once you commit to it, do you have to say like, "Okay, yes, then we are definitely the SRO"? Or could you say, "We vote on one and then if things drop so significantly in vain that we want to hire these positions, we could because we got them potentially voted in." I don't know if that would impact that.
Well, you could do that, but it wouldn't impact your tax rate. Like, once you vote on the budget, that's how your tax rates are gonna be derived. So, I mean, we could at any point in any given year say, "We're feeling a little pressure on this side of the budget, so we're gonna hold on this piece." Or we were gonna, you approved a full-time, but we're gonna change that around and only do a half-time because something else came up. So, I think that what your question, maybe I'm misunderstanding your question, but if you wanna just go forward with option one, which is how I think, I heard you say it, you could tell us, "Don't fill, don't work to fill the SRO" in case that you have a third budget vote. I don't know if that's what you were moving to or not. And then you would remove it at that point.
Or timelines, what, you thought were good for the next vote?
Yeah.
I think that, uh, it would be good for this board to keep in mind that you only lost the vote by forty-nine votes. And we had, um, significantly higher turnout than normal. And the turnout that we got was probably not turnout that's inclined to support school budgets. Um, and so I think you want to go forward to the voters with a budget that you can defend, um, things in it that you can defend, and the cuts that you can defend. And, um, we are all gonna be working on, uh, getting the message out and turning voters out.
Especially the staff.
Yes, absolutely. Um, all right, so just to circle back, I'm mindful of the time. And I know we're wanting, we're gonna need to make a motion to re-warn this budget tonight. I am hearing a little bit of hesitation around, um, adding in the SRO position. Curious where people feel like they wanna land with which, I mean, right now, we're considering not a, like, it's not an option that's actually right up here. It's option one plus the SRO.
Right.
Which is bringing us down to a tax rate of one point oh five nine.
One oh five nine one is, um, removing the SRO?
Yeah.
And it's F. I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
And Morgan, what's, what would that new amount be in the millions?
Uh, twenty-two, four, three, zero, zero, one, three.
Repeat that one more time.
Two, two, four, three, zero, zero, one, three.
And with just looking at option one, keeping the SRO, it's at a, a dollar six? Was there some decimal thing such as, or decimal?
Two, uh, the big number would be twenty-two million, five hundred, eighteen, eight, ninety-three. And the, uh, district tax rate would be a dollar six thirty-three.
It's such a small drop to take the SRO out. Like, I'm just thinking about the opportunities that we are depriving our communities of for such a small... I mean, could that be, I don't know, I'm, because I keep thinking about going back to the, the voters. I was just thinking back to what Kat said, what you had said, um, if we didn't fill it until we had the budget passed. If we kept it in, but we didn't fill it, with the potential of that being the first thing that if the budget didn't pass, that that reduces.
I mean, I feel like if the budget doesn't pass, then, this next time, then we are really going to be facing some tou, even tougher conversations than whether we have an SRO position that we haven't even filled yet. I feel partially that to, to re, I don't wanna discount the people who voted the budget down and their concerns. And so, to not cut anything or not shift this amount in any way feels, um... Yeah, I'm, 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 I would have a tough time with just not trying to get this tax rate down a little bit on behalf of our taxpayers. Because, yeah, I recognize that it was a slender vote, but it's those people, their voice also does matter in this whether, I mean, I'm not saying I agree with it. And I, um, am really struggling because I feel as though we've been incredibly on point with our messaging about opportunities for our kids and where we stand in the state spending and all these factors for months and months. So it is very, it's disappointing. You know, certainly, I'm, I'm open to base, only moving with that option one, but it feels, um, it feels a little hard to not make any concessions to kind of address, um, people's concerns about that tax rate.
Kat?
Mary?
Yeah.
I don't know if my internet is working. I completely missed before I asked the question. But just to speak to what you're saying, um, I mean, I do feel like we're making concessions because we made them at the SU level. And my thought was if we go with option one or two right now, and then if it gets voted down, and maybe if someone already said this, I'm sorry, but then move to option three or four. Because if we come right out with option four and it gets voted down, and it's like, it's gonna get really hard.
Oh, well, and I don't think any, anyone in the room is feeling like option four is even uh, some, where we wanna go right now. And even, I'm not hearing that most of, you know, I'm hearing strongly that people wanna maintain the Berkshire Music Increase. I'm feeling I would really have a hard time hiring the SRO but taking that .5 position from Montgomery. That's, I, I, I feel like I kind of would love to, I would much rather preserve that .5 at Montgomery and forego with the SRO.
Well, I'm just thinking that at the SU level, the removal of the Virtual Learning Academy was as a case six.
Right.
That we, we're impacted. And I know it's ten students, but that's ten of our students. And that, and that's an option that isn't on the table for our kids anymore. And so, I'm just thinking, like, we're down nine cents, correct me if I'm wrong, before we even hit option two. Like nine, that's a big drop from this year. And I just keep thinking about us being at the very, very bottom. And how much lower can we go with our, what we're offering our kids?
There is a clarified question that I think is totally important, too.
Yes.
Um, can you please confirm that all of these options are at least not changing anything that exists this year? You're just cutting additions you hoped to add for next year? And that was just a clarifying.
Correct. That's what's on the table right now. Correct. That these are just positions that have not yet been filled. I mean, we had, you know, option, as far as where we've landed now. The options as they were orig, you know, at the beginning of the slideshow laid out, yes, there were going to be, um, that one Montgomery piece was cutting up. I mean, that one's complicated.
Because that wasn't gonna be able to continue anywhere, of course, that way.
But, right, no reductions in staff, in staff number. No positions, uh, being eliminated. This is just us choosing, potentially choosing to not hire some new positions.
And I think I have been very clear all along that, even though, you know, the, the SU, your board at the SU has made a really big effort to try to get your budget down a little bit, so therefore our assessment of your budget that we, our portion that we have to pay is lower. We at the NMB level also have to, in good faith, make a cut somewhere. So, um, I would like to see us discussing that. Um, I know there are a bunch of positions here that are up, that like was just clarified to the, the last question that was asked. They are not existing positions. We're not cutting existing positions. But those positions that might be vacant, that we can't fill or that we were hoping to get new positions, um, in this budget and realize we can't. We need to, in good faith, make some kind of a cut at the district level to the budget that we presented to the voters on March fifth.
Yeah, I'm, I agree, Lisa. Um, and for me personally, and I feel like it should be that SRO position.
If we have to cut one, that makes the most sense. That's...
And I don't, I think we can revisit it. Um, but I, I think that is the, um, the one that is going to be the least impactful for our students and the community.
I think if it gives you any comfort, it's also the one that, um, potentially could be filled with grant funding.
Right.
You're not gonna hire a point two music teacher on a grant.
Right.
With the first safety grants.
So, I just wanna say along with everybody else that this is really hard for me to say, "Yes, let's hold off on filling that position and take that out of the budget" because it was something I was definitely a proponent of. I've seen the good work that other SROs have done in other school districts. Um, but in terms of actual day-to-day interactions with students all day long, this may be the position that is, um, I don't even know how to say it. Not that it's least hands-on or that it's least impactful, because that's not the case. But this is probably, um, a direct instruction position that isn't a direct, it's not a direct instruction position, um, or a hands-on position all day, every day in a school. So, I guess I would agree with that assessment that that would be the, um, position that we would need to contemplate not filling at this time.
All right. Um, any more discussion from the board? So do people feel comfortable if then we move forward with, uh, the option that actually wasn't up on the board? Which is option one with that SU lower, that lower SU assessment and the shift in after-school and LEAPs funding? And I just wanna reiterate for the public, this is no cuts to the after-school program. We really hear everyone loud and clear how valuable that program is for our families. We love that program. We fully want to support that program. That, it's just a little bit of shifting things around that helps benefit that, um, at the SU assessment level. Um, and then eliminating the SRO position. And so, Morgan- And so Morgan, correct me if I'm wrong, that would lead us to make, we would be making a motion for a budget, a new warning on a twenty-two, four-three-zero-zero-one-three.
Yep, so I would warn it, uh, to warn a revised FY twenty-three Northern Mountain Valley Unified Union School District.
FY twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Did you say FY twenty-three?
Yes.
Twenty-two, four-thirty, oh, one-three.
Okay. So I'll make that motion to warn a revised FY twenty-five Northern Mountain Valley Unified Union School District budget in the amount of twenty-two million, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-and-thirteen dollars. We'll do that by roll. Lisa?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Miranda?
Aye.
Arlene?
Aye.
And Mary is an aye.
So before we can do a motion to, um, approve the warning, we need to set the informational meeting. We need to have one within ten days of the vote. Um, we are certainly recommending that you have one in each community, but we do need to watch in that official one tonight for the warning.
Courtney, can you go back to the slideshow? I kind of have a bunch of dates there.
And so the vote is tentatively going to be on April thirtieth, correct?
Yep.
So after you do this, Art, we're going to go get two other slides that we go through. One more. One more.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay. So we looked at all the dates, um, for all of your meetings. Don't focus there right now. But we, we need to have something within ten days of when you vote on April thirtieth as your formal meeting. So what Morgan and I are going to propose for your final meeting is the twenty-fourth, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth at six o'clock. We would want you to decide where that meeting should be. And then you can see from the slide we're going to go to next.
Is there any way it can be on the twenty-third legally?
It can't because we have E F A B R at the, that night, two-sixths. We're good, but we can't do two meetings at the same time.
Okay.
Could you, the twenty-fifth could be the official one.
I won't be able to, I, I mean, I'll be out of town. My college tours that are all locked in.
Yeah. We're going to have four total meetings. So I think that we're we're, there are going to be meetings that some of you can come to and some that you can't. So I think we're gonna have to be okay with that, but you're gonna have four opportunities to be in front of the public.
I don't think the public's gonna care which one's the official one on the morning or not. I think they're just gonna go to whatever one is what can you do for them.
So we might just want to make sure that you're around for the Montgomery one in particular.
Yeah, no problem.
So if we, can others come on the twenty-fourth? That's it? No? No?
Do you lose that?
I don't have schools on yet. Guess I'm putting that on my calendar. I was hoping to
Do we have to have a forum?
No.
So you did that in Bakersfield on the twenty-fourth. Cause Arlene, did you say you could go?
Yes, yeah.
And Erin's very excited to go.
I was gonna say it's vacation, yeah.
I, I'm not a school teacher on the board. I hope if I were, I will be there.
Okay, so we'll do that formal one on the twenty-fourth. And so let's finish what Morgan needs and then we'll get into my life.
I asked about the time before you switch. I'm sorry.
About six.
Is there any way to work back?
What?
Can we move it a little bit later for people who are trying to come back from work?
Sure. Do we want to do like six-thirty? Did that do it?
Was that seven? I know, I'm, what was it last time? It was six o'clock and we got two people? Yep, so if we try seven.
Seven, the first Bakers.
Where it was at seven.
Is it okay to say seven?
It was at seven.
You have the first
Seven, the one in Bakersfield was at seven.
I mean, I think it should wait till me.
That sounds late.
It seems late.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was early.
I mean,
I mean, it was spring too, so. I could go either way. I guess, I just hope people come out.
What, what if we split the middle and say six-thirty? Sorry, Morgan.
Thank you, Morgan.
Will there be a virtual option?
Yes.
So it's possible if I'm settled and it's a coming year for the night, then I might be able to join virtually.
And that one is in
Where are we doing this with Bakersfield?
Only one of the communication that adds all of
And I'll put it in my calendars.
So you want to schedule the other ones or just that one for now?
Well, I want Morgan to finish and then I have, I'll go over the two slides and we'll schedule the rest.
Okay.
That's all I need. So you, or I'm gonna print out graphs of the warnings for the board members just review and see if you can find a mistake or anything.
Okay, okay. So while he's doing that, I want to talk about, um, I want to send contracts out on April first. I know that you have to be thoughtful as board members about your contingency plan. So if this budget doesn't pass and you have to come back a third time, I don't want to riff any of our existing teachers. I want to offer contracts to all of our existing teachers and we will be thoughtful if we do have to go back a third time. I, I have some non-teaching thoughts that I would go to in terms of my recommendations. I think it's really important to protect the staff that we have and I think it was John, I think it might have been, I don't remember who said it earlier. This is incredibly stressful for everybody who's involved and this is, it's especially stressful for our teachers who are wondering, like, am I going to have a job? Is my position going to be one that's reduced? Because we had to send out the notice saying we have to contemplate, there could be reductions. I think that with the decisions you made tonight, no one would lose a position. If we had to come back and do a round three, Morgan and I spoke today about some other potential things that we could do that wouldn't be position-driven. So I would, and you won't have all of your positions filled by April thirtieth, so we could shift and say, well, we're not gonna fill that position or that position and then use transfer as something that we could do. So everybody has a position. But if we needed to, we would accomplish what we needed to with reductions through some minimal transfers. So would the board agree that I can send all the contracts on April first?
I don't think so. Yeah. As long as we feel like we still have some flexibility should the budget fail again.
Yeah. I think you will. Like, principals never have all the positions filled by April thirtieth. So we could, at that time, sit back and, and look at, it's not the people piece, it's the position piece. So people have licenses that cover a variety of grade levels generally, um, in content areas. So I think we could be creative enough to make it work.
Okay.
Let's hope we don't have to do that.
Do you think then that the positions that are, that stayed in the budget now that don't have any, they're new, you would just hold off on hiring? For now?
I would, I don't think you're gonna get anybody if you hold too long on those. Like, I think you're gonna end up, because we offer contracts on April first. There'll be some people that sign right away by the fifth. There'll be other people that wait till the fifteenth, and then there'll be other people that are looking. So they'll wait until April thirtieth. So they will, we'll know about some of those positions late in the game. So those will be where we have some play there. I, especially the assistant principal position, I'm very reluctant to wait on that because people, they'll, everybody will be under contract. We'll be able to fill. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. I'll, I'm looking forward to communicating that to all of our teachers tomorrow so that they can be less stressed about looking forward. And then the last thing is that slide fifteen again for me. So Morgan and I spent a lot of time together in the last week. Today in particular, we worked on scheduling. Um, and we have scheduled in, uh, six meetings. In, our intention is to get in front of staff members in each of our towns and all, none of our schools. So we're gonna be visiting the sixth town. So we're in Ennisburg. We're hoping that all the Ennisburg people will, you know, come to the one location. We can't quite do all nine. Um, so we have six of those meetings scheduled. We have two informational meetings scheduled for the Ennisburg-Richford side. We would like to schedule four for this side so that we can be in each community. We looked at our combined calendars. We came up with five options for you to consider. You've already taken the twenty-fourth as your formal one. So looking at what's out there, we put one Saturday on the table. Um, Thursday, April eighteenth is an option. Thursday, April twenty-fifth and Monday, April twenty-ninth are all options that could work and not conflict with, I mean, what else we have on our calendars. Could Saturday the four, the thirteenth work for some of you?
Yes, I don't do, at least virtually.
Okay.
I'm, I, I have class, but it's not till once. I might be able to virtually.
I'm not working.
I try to please travel stuff, so traveling every weekend.
I know what that's like. How about you, Erin?
I'm good.
Okay. So could we take that as an option? So we have one Saturday? And then, um, what if we, could we skip the eighteenth and see if the, we already said yes to twenty-four. Does the twenty-fifth and the twenty-ninth work for people?
Yes. Not the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fifth. We do another one, like the very next night after having done?
We have no
Not any town? Yeah, I'll be away on the twenty-fifth. I can do the twenty-ninth.
Could some people be there on the twenty-fifth?
I'm out of town for the winter.
I could do the twenty-fifth.
So the other pieces, we're gonna, I think we'll probably ask our principals to pick a couple of these to go to the hall floor. So we'll principals and Morgan will be at each of these. So if that works with all of you, we will take out the eighteenth. So let me just pull that one out. Cause I think, Erin, we looked at that originally. I know there were some conflicts around that date as well.
Do we know what, um, the locations of each of these?
No, so that's what we need to figure out next.
So we're doing four total or five total?
Four. I'm gonna just delete it, that Thursday one. Cause I can't figure out that list right.
But
Last week, a lot of people were doing conferences that week, so.
Of the eighteenth?
I mean, I don't know if it was during the month of August, but I'm
I think I double-checked that. Because the rest of the time is during vacation.
Yeah, right.
I understand the need, like legally because of the warning to have that one on the twenty-fourth. I question having two the week of vacation. I just think, I think a lot of our audience is just not gonna be, not gonna be there. That just, I don't see the point in also doing the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Would you prefer to do back to the eighteenth idea? Wait, is that already up? Oh, that's up there. The eleventh? Morgan, did we check that one?
I'd prefer, you know, Wednesdays or Tuesdays if possible personally, but you know, the, if it's Thursdays, I can't be there, but you know, other people can go for sure instead.
I'm at a conference that time of the eleventh.
So we have the ER board meeting on the ninth. On the tenth is a Wednesday. Could people do the tenth? Your, your conference? Okay. I think it's pretty important that Morgan's there. We talked about the fifteenth being tax day. I don't know if that impacts anything, but we have an ER meeting on the sixteenth and FNE issue meeting on the seventeenth.
I could do the fifteenth. I could do the fifteenth.
Do you do the fifteenth?
I might not be able to do that one.
And I don't
Bring her.
So NMB would be on the fifteenth, then I'm not confusing myself.
And we don't know which town, which location yet of these ones?
Then thirteen, fifteenth, twenty-fourth is the official one, and then the twenty-ninth is what we all just decided.
So no twenty-five, no eighteen. So thirteen, fifteen,
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four and twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. All right. So now where do you want to do that? Your official is Bakersfield on the twenty-fourth. Do you, the Saturday, the thirteenth, who said they could be there for that one?
I can't be there.
Berkshire.
Do we want to do Montgomery?
No, I might, I might need to be virtual for that one. Want to do, what about, what about Sheldon? Do Sheldon on the thirteenth?
I can't be there.
You can't be there?
Not going to be in town.
What about Berkshire on the thirteenth?
Let's just, I'm just gonna pick.
I?
Berkshire on the thirteenth. Could we do Montgomery on the fifteenth?
Or Sheldon, because that's an easy, easy night for me. I have childcare.
All right, so Berkshire's on the thirteenth. Sheldon is on the fifteenth.
Um, can I, sorry, Sheldon, what's up here? Um, I don't know when the volleyball games are, friends, I don't know if there's a lot that night in jail.
We could do it in the library.
Terry, so.
Okay. And I'm on the reading in that day, just so you know, but I could go to a different one.
Okay. Thank you. Twenty-fourth is Bakersfield, and then the twenty-ninth, Montgomery?
Perfect.
Terry, so we still be able to get into the building if you're not there, though?
I have keys.
Yes, I can let Chris come and check to make sure. Well, there'll still be janitors in the building. It'll be open.
Emily just said she could get us into. So I think we have our dates. So this last part is just about communication planning. So we've got all of these informational meetings. That was part of the feedback that we got. People wanted it in each of the communities. We will be in each of the communities. Some are during vacation, some of the week before, some of the week after. We've got a Saturday option. Um, we are gonna be out six times in schools doing this. Um, the other thing that we put out there is a little more stressful now that we're looking at the totality of the dates and obligations that we now have from these budgets. Um, coffee and conversation option. Did you want us to try to schedule something as like a, a morning option during the week where we pick a spot and say, um, one or two places within NMB?
I think if we're doing four meetings and just historically, we've only ever had one or two people show up, ever. So I feel like if we're doing like four meetings, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot of time for everybody and we can serve coffee there.
I was just gonna say, we're gonna need coffee there.
Coffee and cookies at the meeting.
Might get people in.
We'll try it. So no coffee times for, we're, we're not gonna be sad if we tell it's not due though.
I, I think this is enough. I mean, this is a heavy lift for everyone and right, Emily's not wrong that historically we have a hard time bringing them out when it's one or two, let alone four. But let's hope that in each community and maybe that will be moving forward. Something that we need to consider is that next year we do one in every single community moving forward and that's our norm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are these dates gonna be advertised on the mailer that goes out or is there not yet? Fine, like when can that go out?
We will advertise it in a couple of ways. We haven't finalized what our mailer's gonna look like, but we will post it on our social media page. And were you gonna say something about the mailer?
Nothing.
And can you please put all these dates in the, each of the school newsletters?
Yes. Yes. We'll put all in all.
Yeah. Can we send them home in kids' Friday folders? Could we do that? I don't know if that's crossing the line, but I feel like we can. That would be really good.
Um, I'm adding all of this to the list. I think the other piece is the work that you all can do. So we know there were 49, there's a difference between yeses and noes by 49 people. So if you think about the people that you know within your communities, we have the voter checklist, I think it's getting too late to have you partner up with the voter checklist today. We'll email you your specific town's voter checklist and maybe review it between now and your NMB meeting. And then at that meeting, if you each come with a list of people that you know that you're gonna have a conversation with, you can make sure that you're not doubling up on the people. And I think that the tangent behind this certainly is not to say, I noticed you voted or I noticed you didn't vote. Just like, I'm reaching out and wondering if you have questions about the budget. More about that, just to try to get people to get all their questions answered. We'll supply, one of the things Morgan and I talked about today are the talking points and the visuals. I think a lot of the visuals that Morgan creates are really helpful for people to understand the process. So we'll have all of that for you to look at and share as you're having conversations. Some of the things that we got out of the survey, Front Porch Forum came up in the mailer. We heard we want more in-depth information. We heard we want less in-depth information. We want more details, we want less details. So we're not sure where to go with that, but we'll work on trying to meet the needs of both of those.
The golden locks for all of our pieces.
Yeah. The other piece that did come up, and I think that it is a good suggestion, is putting things like on, out in the community, like reminders on the bulletin board I can refer to, things like that. So we'll try to get some flyers out in our communities about the vote. And again, I said this earlier to the person who said, you know, you know, the books, like typing for dummies or whatever. I just, we'll try, but it's really, it's really hard. We will produce an FAQ that I think we'll send out as well that I told you about earlier. And then obviously you have that ability to look at the voter checklist.
And I would like to add with the voter checklist that I want to make sure that we're kind of calling people in rather than calling them out.
Sure.
And I think it can make people uncomfortable. I think it's good to let people know that we have no, we are not privy to how they voted. Or it's just, did they vote or not? And if not, what can we do to help get you to the polls with a clear understanding of how this budget impacts you?
I think you don't even have to mention that they didn't vote because we, all of us know whether we voted or not. So I think just using this as a tool to say, I know this person, this person and this person, and like committing to having a conversation. That's more really what it's about.
I was gonna say, I think just calling as a community member and, like, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Yeah.
And I mean, I know in my town, I've now had lengthy conversations. I've had the dump at the cafe, at the post office, at Sylvester's, have, I mean, everywhere I go. And I, I'm always happy, so for, you know, people in Montgomery, I'm gonna continue to kind of make myself, and I know, you know, Kat too, and I think each of us in our respective communities, I think we can do a really good job being, you know, stewards of the budget and helping people to really understand what we're trying to do to create a system that is, you know, equitable and excellent for all. This is a really integrous budget. It was from the beginning, and I think we've done a good job taking a few things out and listening to the voters in that way. But this wasn't a budget to begin with a lot of unnecessary extras. So I'm hoping we can communicate that better this time around, that this is all about opportunities for our kids and not about a race to the bottom of spending in the state. Because if we want to see the results that we see in those other systems and we have to invest in these schools, the solution to maybe the results not being where we want them is to, is not to spend less. So continue to try to help people understand that.
And with that said, I think one of the things as a board we look to is, what opportunities do kids have in some of those other top-ranking schools who are spending more that we're not providing for kids in this sector? And that, yeah, we do need to reset budget, and we need to start providing some of these other experiences for them.
You know, it's experiences and, I will just add, when you look at your capacity to, around recruitment, your capacity to work with your teachers to get a more competitive wage, it's hard to compete with people that are spending several thousand dollars more per people in their budget. They have the ability to keep ahead of us.
Yeah.
I think, oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say that I think it's really important that we clarify just because our budget is going up X amount of dollars doesn't mean that the tax rate equals that amount. And I think that's where we need to talk about Act 127, that we are gaining more for our tax rate. And the reason because, I know you did that before, but for some reason it just didn't click with people. Probably because we had two people at our meeting, I don't know. But I think we really, we have to spell that out, that yes, our budget's going up, but guess what, guys, you're not paying for it thanks to Act 127.
But I also think there's, because the media is looking at Act 127 as something, as a bad thing, because there are some districts where it is going to shift their spending.
Absolutely.
We have an uphill battle because it's all over the place that this is bad. Teachers are losing jobs because of this, because some districts do need to make some tough decisions because the spending is shifting. But that's not us.
Right, that's not us, so, yeah.
There's, I promise this is the last thing I'll say. You might get a little wind up about this. There's loose language associated to, between advantage and disadvantage. When you look at where we land in the state, I would qualify what we've been able to offer for our kids. This, we have served in a disadvantaged system for decades. Meaning, people at the top have been advantaged. So now the language is, they're just the disadvantaged, and the bottom is the advantaged, which is, it's, I understand what they're saying, but it's confusing language. Because I still think when you look at our capacity comparatively, it doesn't mean we're no longer disadvantaged. But what it, they're losing capacity, we're gaining capacity. It's unfortunate that the language has shifted the way it has. It's confusing.
I think definitely having a, like, a one-page bullet, like, in red, budget revote info and have it be super clear. But then when you flip it over, do all your fancy graphs. Because there are some people that just love those fancy graphs. And then other people don't understand them. I think they're overwhelming. So maybe give either option on a two-sided typed mailer, one pager.
I agree. Christina just sent me, um, she just said that they passed the vote at Light Region just now. And she sent me the mailer, or the flyer that we passed around, which I could share with you, Lynn and Morgan, if you wanted to see it. Just kind of a simple breakdown of how the tax rate is impacted. But I definitely agree that if we are using any kind of graphs or visuals, while I think at first glance they might seem like they're easy to interpret, I don't think that most of them are, and they require a human explanation that's often not accompanying, you know, those graphs that they're just going out in the mailer. Obviously, they come to the meetings, they'll get the benefit of the explanation. So I really just want to also create a, using just bulleted points and just keeping things like less is more.
Great. Thank you. Um, any other discussion tonight, folks? It's, I know it's getting on there, and we all have to drive through. It's almost like it's still dumping snow. Is it the seventh winter?
So has anyone handled any typos on that?
I mean, is this a trick question? Did you embed, did you intentionally embed a mistake?
There's a comma where there shouldn't be one on the last three of the article one, what do you mean, of the 22nd? Or do you want a comma?
I want a comma.
You do? Okay.
Yeah, you want a comma there. There's a pause in the sentence. Well, if you read it, there's a pause in the sentence.
Right.
Oh, there's a natural pause, so that, that's not.
Where's the comma?
Never mind.
I was really trying.
You thought there was gonna be a crack.
You have a comma there because that's an adverbial clause.
It's too late.
In which case, I would like a motion to approve the FY '25 budget vote warning and authorize the chair to sign away from the table.
Do that, I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Erin. Um, by role, Kat. All right, Lisa.
Aye.
Miranda.
Aye.
Arneen.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Emily.
Aye.
Mary's an aye.
All right. Can I have one more comment? I know we really want to go on, but I just picked up on a comment in here that I just want to speak to. There's a comment about us pushing back on legislature. And I, I just want to spend a moment and thank Lynn and Morgan because you, you have pushed back. You have helped change things so that we weren't falling off a cliff. And you then have also educated parts of the legislature this past, like, last, was it last week? Just last week? To understand how this is impacting us and others around us. I watched the testimony and I was just blown away by what you presented and the work that you guys are putting in to help our students in our communities. And I thank you for that. And I thank the team that you have behind you. So you are advocating for us and you are pushing boundaries. And I want that known and I want that recorded.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, you're here, thank you, Erin.
Erin, I'm glad that you, oh, sorry.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm glad that you brought that up because I noticed that was also in the comments. And I think you should include that in the FAQs as well, like advocacy work that you guys do. Because that wasn't the first testimony. I watched two of your testimonies just in the last few weeks, or however long it's been. And I have to think there's been many more before that and many more to come. And seeing some of the other leaders in the room who are looking to you is really commendable. And I want people to know that. What an amazing job you guys are doing. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Kat.
Great. Anything else, folks? All right, so I'll make a motion, oh, our next meeting will be, no, our, well, I guess that is, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is April 3rd. We do have negotiations next week, but that's not.
Monday.
On Monday and Tuesday. That's not everyone, so. All right, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
What are the negotiations on the meeting today?
Support staff negotiations on Monday, superintendent negotiations on Tuesday.
Yes.